Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. The Special Meeting of the Planning Board of Township West Orange, April 30, 2025, 6:30 PM, in Councilor Chambers. Notice of this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No pneumatic will start after 10:30 PM. I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The next Planning Board regular meeting will be held May 7, 2025, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please, AMOlet.
Mr. Alpert?
Yeah.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Morgan? Mr. Wilks?
Here.
Ma'am McCartney? Is there where you know? And Chairman Bob?
Here. Thank you. We have the draft minutes from the January 29, 2025 Western Planning Board meeting. I make a motion we adopt the January 29, 2025 Western Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Mc- Mayor McCartney's seconds. On the motion, AMOlet.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Ma'am McCartney?
Yes.
Chairman Bob?
Yes, motion is adopted. Thank you. Ms. McGovern, do you swear in the Township Professionals, please?
We have, um, thank you, Mr. Hazel, Mr. McNeil. Just raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
The application before us this evening is PB 24-01, West Essex Highlands Incorporated, Block 179, Lot 32, IH1 Zone on Warner Road. The applicant is proposing to develop a 496-unit inclusionary multifamily residential development on a vacant 120-acre property in northwest corner of the township of West Orange.
Everybody's thinking here.
I can see you are very bummed.
Bum?
Yeah, you are.
I'm sorry. I will talk louder.
Can you hear me? That's better. You got to really be up on it.
Okay. Work on it.
So I think we are up to Mr. Uh, Mr. Afrin was continuing with, um, his objection, uh, case.
Okay, Mr. Afrin.
Okay, thank you. Is, is it on? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Uh, we have two witnesses for tonight. If you recall, at the last meeting when there was a, a technical problem, we couldn't go forward. One of those witnesses had a vacation scheduled for today. He's out of the country, but he is available. That's Mark Gallagher for June 4, assuming the room is available at that time. And we'll have other witnesses at that point. But we do have two witnesses tonight. Uh, the first is Emil DeVito, who was scheduled at the last meeting that we had to postpone because of the technical problem. And then we have, um, Luke Butler, uh, who is the second witness tonight. Um, Mr. Fagan is checking to see if we have. We do. Okay. Yeah, let's just make sure we have Mr. DeVito's. It was sent last time, but Mr. Fagan is checking to see if he still has it in his system. So we're, we're trying to get the display sent back again. Uh, without that, his testimony would be problematic.
Mr. Afrin, do the second witness first? Would that speed things along?
It really wouldn't make sense, to be honest. Okay. You'll see why.
Tell you later.
Stage front?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's it.
Camera.
Like, no way. Very bold, man.
So, so if you ever watch the show L.A. Law from the 80s, what people say is the most amazing thing is that there's no computer on their desks. What they do is walk around with legal pants.
You're right. Yes, yes. You're right. All tapered.
And they're like a library with books. You don't realize what changes there are until you go and you watch some of those. I'm like, yeah, it's really, it's so different.
Okay. Okay, I think we're ready. Find answers? Mr. Chairman, we're ready. Thank you. If anyone can't hear me, I'm, I'm sure you'll let me know. I'll try to keep my voice up. We are, we're presenting Emil DeVito, Dr. Emil DeVito, who is the, um, PhD forester at the New Jersey Conservation Fund, I believe is the foundation is correct name. Um, let me just qualify Mr. DeVito, uh, quickly if I can.
Swear, man.
I'm sorry.
Just raise your right hand. You swear affirm to give the, to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please give your full name, um, and spell it, please, for the record.
First name is E.M.I.L.D. Emil. Last name is DeVito. E.E. capital V.I.T.O.
Uh, Mr. DeVito is being offered as an expert in forestry and forest ecology. Uh, I understand you have a PhD. Is that correct, Mr. DeVito?
Yeah.
And what is, what is your PhD in?
My PhD was obtained in 1988 at the University of Wisconsin, studying New Jersey forest birth communities and forest.
And, uh, before that, you had a ma-, uh, an undergraduate degree from where?
University.
Okay, what was your field major study?
Uh, zoology at Rutgers, and then ecology and ornithology and forest ecology at Wisconsin.
And did you get a master's as part of your PhD, or is that just?
No, just BA in zoology from Rutgers and a PhD from Wisconsin.
Thank you. I understand you're presently employed by the New Jersey Conservation Foundation. Is that correct?
Correct.
And what is your position at the foundation?
I'm the manager of science.
And in that capacity, do you work in the field of forestry or forest ecology?
Uh, I work all over New Jersey and sometimes in other parts of the Northeast on forest ecology issues, restoring rare plant and animal habitat, doing, uh, rare species conservation, doing scientific studies with a number of colleagues from different universities, educating the public, all variety of things.
And how long have you worked with the New Jersey Conservation?
Six years.
With the foundation?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we proffer Mr. DeVito as an expert in forestry and forest ecology and zoology.
Do I manage this board have any questions about its credentials? Mr. Plucker, do you have any questions about it?
Yeah, I don't take any issues with Mr. DeVito's credentials. I just would like to place a statement on the record that it appears that the testimony he is going to offer has zero impact on the application's compliance with the township's ordinances or this board's jurisdiction. But that being said, I will leave it up to, uh, the board and the chairman's discretion as to how they want to hear and handle that testimony.
We'll listen and.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would just respond and note that
Mr. Afrin.
An ecology study was required by the settlement agreement, particularly in the area of forestry and forest health. And specifically, that is one of the reasons Mr. DeFeo was retained, and it was required as a part of the settlement and incorporated into the ordinance, and therefore it is directly responsive to, number one, Mr. DeFeo's testimony, and number two, it is within the jurisdiction because it is mandated as a part of this very application.
Thank you. Mr. DeVito, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I will just sit over here, but if I interject, I'll have the mic over here.
I'm sorry, Dr. DeVito.
Thank you. So I just want to talk a little bit about what happens to a forest when it gets developed. It, depending on what kind of development occurs and the geography of the development. So the, the forest here, uh, in West Orange up on the ridge um, is large enough to contain what we call interior core forest habitat. In other words, the edges of the forest suffer from all sorts of degradation, be it excessive wind, excessive heat, animals and plants that don't belong in the forest that are bleeding in from the backyards and streets and nearby areas. But the interior of the forest, if you get far enough away from all of those uh, disturbances, that still acts as a forest ecosystem. And so when you look at a forest tract, you have to think about what parts of the forest are acting as interior core forest habitat that contains all the typical ecological processes that go on in a forest and all this species that ought to, ought to be in the forest versus what's edge, where the forest is being diminished, degraded by the surrounding urban landscape.
Let me just note for the record, since there are no page numbers, that was the first page of the slide, which was a photo, aerial photograph of this forest tract. We're now on the second page, which, um, has a heading in the right corner, 300-foot edge effects.
So typically, for an eastern deciduous upland forest of this type, mostly uplands, at least this forest has some wetlands in it. But it's, you know, on a ridge, it's basically a dry oak hickory-type forest. This is a quite mature forest. It's never had agriculture, and the soil's never been plowed. So it has an intact soil layer, and it has an intact layer, ground layer of herbaceous plants, shrubs, and of course, the tree canopy, which is well over 100 years old. And the interior of the forest generally, for this type of forest, you would use a thumbnail of 300 feet as, as where the edge effects degrade the forest. So by, you see the red line at the top of the photo, that's a 300-foot line that goes around the perimeter of the entire forest patch. Now, in this photo, I'm not looking at property lines. I'm just looking at the entire forest patch. Some of it bleeds onto other, uh, parcels. So when you, when you take a 300-foot edge effect, you're left with this patch, hatch green, which is the interior of the forest where you would expect interior forest species. It's cooler, it's more moist. It doesn't suffer from excessive sunlight or wind or wind throws because of storms nearly as much as the edge. It doesn't suffer from a whole host of species that inhabit the suburban landscape and do better around people. And so it has a very different biology than what's going on on the edges.
The word is, the word interior, is that equal to the word core in this context?
Interior and core are interchangeable. Right.
So core forest is the same as interior on the screen?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, in the graphic down below, we note that there are, the pat, the whole entire patch is 143 acres of forest, and it has 58 acres of core or interior forest. And, um, we'll, we'll talk about the numbers later in, in a, in a better visual, but when you look at what's proposed to be developed, the number of core, the acres of core or interior forest go from 58 down to nine. And we'll, we'll show you that a better in a future graphic.
Let me just clarify then, the green crosshatched section, which occupies the majority of the forested area in this slide, that's the interior or core forest. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the lighter, the, the darker green around it, that is what you're describing as the edge. Is that correct?
The, the dark green line that goes around is just the edge of the forest patch, and the edge, the forest that functions as edge, which is to some extent degraded, is the forest that's not colored in.
Thank you. So the perimeter around the green crosshatch is the edge. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I don't know what happened there. I didn't, don't think I did that. Oh, thank you. Okay, so one of the things that happens when you have forest edge is that you get all of these creatures that are predators on the interior forest species, blue jays that do incredibly well by people, gray squirrels. They don't, uh, crows, skunks, raccoons, they don't like to go deep into a core forest because the core forest is not safe for them. The core forest has predatory uh, birds like great horned owls and hawks that do really well in the core forest, where it's uh, more shaded and, and not as much sunlight, and the animals aren't used to being in there, so they don't know the terrain as well, so they, it's unsafe for them, whereas they do great around the edges. And so once you start to cut up a forest and create additional edge, you, these creatures get access to the middle of the forest, and they do a great deal of damage to the processes that go on inside the forest. So now the yellow line here is the parcel, uh, that's in question, and the, this picture shows the current forest interior that's on that parcel, where the forest processors are still much as they were three or 400 years ago when the whole place was forest. Right? And as development has approached, this forest patch has become isolated, and then, uh, the edge habitat is diminished, and the core forest species only have this interior core area to, to utilize and, um, where their population can be sustained. The green area is a population surplus area where critters are successful, they produce young, they have an abundance of offspring, and the gray area that's not colored in green is a population sink where critters, who, it looks like forest, they settle there, they try to go through their life history, but they don't generally do very well, so it's called a population sink because that's where the core forest species go to die. And they're not successful.
Where on here do you see the, could clarify, please, where is the population sink depicted here, or where do you identify it on this slide?
So the population sink is everything that's not colored in. Right? It's the area that's not green crosshatched. That's where core forest species fail in having successful reproduction and maintaining their population.
Is the population sink analogous to the word edge in your usage?
Well, the edge is the place, and the population sink is what happens. It's, that's why we use the word sink. It's like going down the drain.
Thank you. For the record, this is a slide. We all see it, but just for the record, this is a slide with a solid yellow, uh, outlining the rectangular forest.
So these are some of the species that you expect in the core forest. Of course, I haven't surveyed this forest. It's, uh, I, you know, I, I've brought, been brought in on this. I don't have permission to go into that forest, and not only that, it was the wrong time of the year. But these are the species that you would expect in the forest, and they're species of special concern in New Jersey. Now, they have no regulatory protection. But I'm just pointing it out that, you know, if you're interested in protecting forest processes, if you're interested in protecting the integrity of the biodiversity in your community, these are the kind of species that you can be concerned about. Uh, box turtle and wood thrush uh, are on, on the top. Box, obviously, box turtle on the left, wood thrush on the right, and the smooth greensnake is a species that you would expect in the core forest. And probably, you know, after another few weeks go by, you would be able to go there. These animals would be either out of hibernation or back from the tropics where they migrate, and you would find these species in the core forest attempting to breed.
For the record, this is a slide headed New Jersey Species of Special Concern with Three Animals Depicted.
So this slide shows the proposed development envelope superimposed onto the aerial photograph in red. You can see that much of that development envelope is within the existing, what's now existing as and functioning as core forest. And if you were to put a 300, now, so now, once we see where the development will occur and the forest will be cleared, it will turn into an urban landscape or suburban landscape, um, then we have to go ahead and put a 300-foot line around that red patch because then, over time, everything within 300 feet of that development will start, begin to act as edge, and after a few years, all of those interior forest functions will be lost. So if we put that 300-foot line, whoops, I don't know what happened there. Um, if we put that 300-foot line, thank you for zooming in, then you can see that in addition to the forest that's completely obliterated by the development, there's also the impact to the rest of the green core forest uh, everywhere within 300 feet of that development would, is no longer acting as core forest. It's acting as edge. And so if you, if we then look at the next slide, now I've colored in the core, the remaining core forest. This is the forest that remains that's more than 300 feet from any development, any urban or suburban development. And it's the two areas that are outlined in that magenta color, and that totals nine acres.
Let me clarify then, you have two areas that comprise a total combined of nine acres. Is that correct? Okay. Now, you're testifying that that would be the remaining core forest after the project is built.
That's right.
Now, can you go back?
That doesn't happen immediately. That takes a little bit of time, a few years, for those edge processes to invade the forest that hasn't been disturbed. But after a few years, you would only have core forest ecological processes still happening with integrity in those areas outlined in magenta. And that's, that nine acres is not big enough to support any core forest species.
And just to clarify, this and the slide previously depict the red area, and the red area is the area of development of the proposed project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So again, here's the core forest today, and then there's the same image with the proposed development in red and the remaining core forest, which totals nine acres. Uh, and again, nine acres is not enough to support any population of any forest interior species. Forest interior species are area-sensitive. They, in order to maintain a population, those forest interior species need a decent-sized tract of forest. Usually, it's about 50 acres or more for a population to be sustained, which they have now, which they, you know, will completely, all the core forest species will disappear. That's a lot of species. And I already mentioned, we haven't done any studies. We don't know of any threatened or endangered species that are existing in this forest, and it's not very likely that there are any threatened or endangered species that are protected by regulation because they generally need even greater acres of core forest, but there are lots of species of special concern that should be in here, and species of special concern that are listed by the state of New Jersey are those species that are next in line to become threatened. So if you're interested in protecting biodiversity in your municipality, then you should be trying to protect your core forest. That's federal, I have.
For the, if you can go back to the last slide a moment, please. So for the record, this slide depicts the area of disturbance in red, and then it has three smaller areas in magenta, and those are the areas the witnesses said comprise remaining core forest. I'm just describing it so the written record is clear as to what slide, uh, we're, we're dealing with. Was that all your presentation at this point with the slides?
That's all I have. If anyone would like to ask any questions, I would welcome that.
Well, let me develop a little bit with you on one point. Now, looking at this slide, is it, is it your testimony that everything that is remaining outside of the magenta and not including the area of red, that would be edge forest? Is that correct?
That's right. Over time, after a few years.
Now, what, what's the process that affects edge? What, what does the edge forest go through versus the core forest?
Well, the edge forest has additional sunlight, higher temperatures, greater exposure to wind, greater exposure to drought, because the canopy is subject to wind, trees get blown over in storms. Uh, so the soil uh, loses its moisture more easily. The, the, the forest canopy is what creates the conditions, the interior forest conditions. And if you're too far, if you're too close to an edge, you lose those conditions. And once you lose those conditions, insect populations change. Uh, forest understory plant populations change. You get lots of weeds, alien species invade from people's backyards. Invade from people's backyards. Uh, you get all those predators that I talked about venturing into the forest because they feel safe. Because of the predator, the, the larger predators that prey on blue jays, you pros and. Uh, squirrels and those types of things, they're, they're gone.
So you're saying over time, there's a species interchange in which edge species predominate because there's very little core forest left?
That's right. Two, there are two different habitats. They're as different as chalk and cheese.
Is it, go ahead, sorry.
That's, yeah, you just, you get a total changeover of the flora and fauna between a core forest and an edge forest. An edge forest is sort of. You know, like. A little bit bigger than a hedge row in a farm field. It's, it's not a forest. It's just edge.
Is there an analogy?
Things like raccoons and pros and deer and woodchucks and all the things that live with people, none of the sensitive species.
And what species typically would live in the core forest that would be lost once it converts to edge?
Well, I, I gave you. Uh, three special concern species that probably are there, you know, if we were to go look. And there would be a lot more, all sorts of species of forest warblers. Uh, long distance migratory birds. Uh, there would be. Uh, a lot more of the various. Uh, salamander species because the soils remain moist, so redback salamanders. And other woodland salamanders. There would be a whole series of species that suffer. Once you lose those core forest conditions. But as I said before, it's important to recognize that. You lose a lot of species. They just don't happen to be species that are on the threatened and endangered list. Because. You know, first, we don't, we haven't searched this forest for threatened and endangered species. And so we don't know if there are any there, but also it's not likely that there are. Any threatened and endangered species there because usually you have to get upwards of. Three or four hundred acres of forest to start accumulating those most sensitive threatened and endangered species. But that doesn't mean the special concern species aren't important. They are. They're next on the list.
Now, aside.
Losing them, they're, all of their populations are declining in New Jersey. Every one of those special concern species. That's why they're called special concern and they're in danger of being lost in the near future.
What's the primary cause of the decline in these species?
Forest fragmentation, development and the creation of edge as opposed to forest interior.
Now, you are familiar with Mr. DeFeo's presentation, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
Now, Mr. DeFeo spoke to the goal of putting deer fencing, basically creating two side forests outside of the area of disturbance. Is that process that Mr. DeFeo speaks about, putting those fences up to encourage new understory, going to. Halt the creation of edge forest as you've described?
No, that, that will, if those fences are effective and last for decades. And actually prevent deer, somebody's monitoring them every time a tree falls down. Um, that will have some impact on the regeneration of forest understory. But that has nothing to do with ameliorating the fragmentation via extra sunlight, extra wind. Soil moisture declining, all those other factors, that has nothing to do with it. So, e- even if we had no deer in New Jersey, we would still have all the problems of forest fragmentation and loss of core forest.
So the deer fencing will not address this problem at all?
Well, not one bit.
One moment, please. I just need a moment, I'm sorry. Can you also just explain? The remainder core forest in magenta would not be sufficient to maintain their ecological processes?
Well, certain ecological processes. Would still be occurring in those magenta areas, but the species that require core forest, they didn't evolve in tiny little patches of forest like that. They, they're, they need, their territories are much larger than. A handful of acres. And so that you, they, they don't support the populate, populations of core forest species. They're just not enough, there's just not enough space. They're just jammed into too small of an area, you know, they don't even have the size of necessarily one or two breeding territories.
As an analogy, you and I talked about this, I'm not sure it's, it's a proper biological concept, but. Is there any analogy between edge and core forest and barrier beach and interior bays and things like that?
So you're, you're asking me about a barrier beach habitat versus a.
I mean, in other words, barrier beaches absorb wind.
Water.
Yeah, I mean, barrier beaches absorb wind, they absorb salt and things of that nature and the ecosystem behind them is much different. Does the edge, in a sense, protect the core in the same way?
The analogy that you're speaking of is. Obviously, there's the ocean, which is saltwater and it's windy and, you know, it's a harsh environment. So as you move inland on a barrier beach, you go from a grassland. To a shrub land of black cherry and poison ivy. And then if you get a couple of hundred yards back from the beach, then you start to get juniper trees. And holly trees and. Uh, you end up with a, with a forest because the impact of the ocean is ameliorated as you move inland. And so the same thing is true here. The, the development is incredibly harsh, unsuitable environment and it. Causes things to be happening on the edge of the forest and those things progressively march inland. Until you get a certain distance from the disturbance and that in this type of forest is generally. Considered to be three hundred feet. Many of our regulations talk about three hundred feet. In terms of protecting forest quality.
Now, I understand there are some who feel that the edge is actually much larger. Uh, fifteen hundred feet, for example, you're using three hundred feet. Could you explain why you're choosing that number?
Well, I'm choosing three hundred feet because eastern deciduous forest. Tends to, you know, that's about, that's about. Three or four and four. Uh, the height, that's about the height of three or four trees combined. So if a tree on the edge blows down and the sunlight comes in, the next tree blows down after a decade. You have enough gas forming and sunlight and wind that. He, you know, until you get three hundred feet from where the, so all that's starting, that's how you lose your forest houses. Uh.
Did the video, oh, okay. Great for the death race to pass. I'm sorry, Mr. DeVito, go right ahead.
Please go on.
There, there are other things that you would use much larger buffer sizes for. For instance, if you had a vernal pond here that had breeding. Uh, rare. Uh, vernal pond obligate species like spring peepers or. Um. Wood frogs. Generally, you know, there's a lot of debate over this, but for example. Uh, states that have really good forest regulations say that a vernal pond needs a one thousand foot buffer. Uh, New Jersey has no regulations. So. You know, people who do forestry in New Jersey don't have to protect vernal ponds, nor do, nor do developers.
But you're using the three hundred foot edge as a sort of conservative measure.
Well, three hundred foot is. What it should be for this forest type. If we were in the Pine Barrens of New Jersey, the forest ecology is very different. And the buffer would be much less. It might only be a hundred feet. Because it's already a sunny, dry. Forest. It doesn't have that. That shady, cool canopy. It's not cool and green and shady to quote the John Denver song, right? So if you have, if you have an open savanna. Where wildfires are present and trees are far apart, then you don't really get edge effects. So.
That was my last question, really, in terms of the canopy. How, you mentioned earlier, the canopy helps create and protect the core. Could you explain that process?
Creates the forest environment that the core forest species evolved with. And that canopy, you know, has been here for thousands of years. And now there's so little of it left and that's the point of trying to protect those places where we still have forest canopy.
Thank you. That, that covers my questions directly for the witness, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. May McCarthy, if you have any questions for Mr. DeVito on his testimony.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Mr. De- DeVito. So, from the testimony that we've heard so far, I understand the proposed application is one hundred and twenty acres. Twenty-five of that is steep slope. And sixty-one. Is developable. And the testimony we heard was that they were going to disturb twenty-seven point nine. By looking at that. Stark red blotch. As what you're calling proposed, the proposed development area. That, to me, looks like a lot more than twenty-seven point nine acres. Um, so. I'm just, I feel a little.
So the table there shows. That the existing forest area is one forty-three and the post-development forest area is a hundred and fourteen. That comes out to be twenty-nine acres. So the red is twenty-nine acres. That's all done with G I S computer measuring, it's accurate. So that if the red blotch is twenty-nine acres, the problem is that by developing twenty-nine acres. You lose. Core forest conditions on. Forty-nine acres. Because of that three hundred foot, the, the development takes up twenty-nine acres and then the three hundred feet around the development takes another twenty acres. Out of what we need for core forest conditions.
I have to think about that. Thank you.
Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Dr. DeVito?
So, yes, sure. So to follow up on that, so the red one, well, does that include? I believe there's going to be some landscaping added. Did you?
Landscaping is irrelevant. Forest, you, you want to have core forest, you need undisturbed forest, three hundred feet away from any disturbance. Landscaping.
You can't, you can't plant, you can't plant back.
You can't make forest. Once you disturb forest soil, it's gone.
Not forest, an edge within, within, in other words, you're measuring three hundred feet from the edge of the red. Should you go in a little bit because there's going to be, let's say, fifty feet of landscaping within?
Because that, that's not going to create any kind of canopy. It's just going to be scattered plantings of various things that's.
Like it's just. And that's not in an edge, an edge is still dead.
Well, that's. No, I, I'm talking about the edge of the actual forest. The landscaping is no different, whatever you do for landscaping is no different than somebody's lawn or somebody's shrubs or that's just development. That doesn't count toward any kind of forest conditions.
I, I think there might be some confusion with the word edge. The word edge refers to a forest, but not the area of development.
Correct.
Right.
But. Three hundred feet in from the. Edge of the natural forest is where the core starts.
That's right.
If you were to disturb something within the core. You, you couldn't, you couldn't, you can't replant within the three hundred foot edge. To create more edge.
So.
Enhance the edge.
So, one way to enhance, it's, it might be possible to enhance an edge to some tiny degree. By. Planting, for example. Evergreens. That. Keep sunlight out, you know, out of the forest, but that doesn't do anything for. The crows, the blue jays, the squirrels, all the predators, all the weeds that are going to come from people's yards. So you might be able to mitigate that problem of extra sunlight and extra wind a little bit. But you, I, plus, you would have to plant. In order to do that. And, and not let those processes begin, you would have to plant, you know. Uh, Norway spruces that are already forty or fifty feet tall, which you can't do. Cause what if, if you plant something that's six feet tall, it's doing nothing.
Until, until it matures.
Oh, by that time, this is already over.
Okay, okay. Does the building itself create any kind of a barrier for wind and weather and things to protect it?
Uh, well. I would imagine a building smack up against a forest would, depending on which way the wind blows, would occasionally be helpful, but. You know, there's so many other aspects to this in terms of. All the critters that are coming to that building because of the fact that people. You know, make pros, squirrels.
Reckons.
Raccoons, they, you know, they come to the building because people are there and then they go into the forest and eat all the bird eggs and. All the other core forest species.
So if. So it, just in general, if a forest is only six hundred feet deep, it's not really a forest?
That's right. Absolutely. That's. That's exactly right. If you have a forest that's six hundred by six hundred by six hundred. There's no forest there at all. You're going to get nothing but common. Edge species that live with people, all the things that live in everybody's backyard.
So, but then if you expanded that zero forest into ten acres, is that a forest? So, or is it, whatever the math is for?
If you, if, if, so, if you have a forest that's six hundred feet square, there's no core forest.
Right.
If you add a hundred feet all the way around on every side, now you have a little bit of core forest. I couldn't tell you the exact amount.
Right, right.
But until you get to be, you know, forty, fifty, a hundred acres of core forest. It's not big enough for the core forest species to live there. It's just a museum piece.
So what's the smallest core forest?
I would say, if you have fifty acres of core forest, then you have. Forest where forest interior species can survive, box turtles, wood thrushes. Smooth green snakes. Worm eating warblers. Um, oven birds. All sorts of butterflies and salamanders that need core forest. You'd have hundreds of species.
So that's a fifty acre plot of land with a three hundred foot buffer?
A forest.
A forest, correct, yeah, around, right, right.
Right. Which, that's very rare in this part of the world. And that's what you have here.
So let's clarify if I can, what is the existing core forest in terms of acreage as it stands now?
Fifty-eight acres.
So basically, in, in answer to a member Klein's question, basically, we have the smallest reasonable core forest now.
That's right. And that, you know, that's why it's so rare in this part of the world. There's almost no patch this big that's left. Now, you do have some bigger patches in the wetlands, you know, along the Passaic River, East Orange Water Reserve, that kind of place. But those are mostly well enforced. They're completely different habitat, completely different species for the most part.
I, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
I think I'm good.
Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions?
No additional questions, no.
Mr. Alper, do you have any questions for Dr. DeVito?
Um. Um, thanks, Dr. DeVito. Uh, does, I think you covered some of this, but does the deer fencing? Protect um, at all from, from the edge predators? Does it make it harder for any of the edge predators or are they small enough that they slip in?
They climb. And yeah, they just.
Gotcha.
You know, they either fly or climb. I mean, I mean, a raccoon might have a little trouble, but.
Not enough to make a difference.
The first branch that falls up against the fence, you know, that doesn't get. Swept away, you know, the next day, the raccoon's going to be in there because the raccoon is looking at that part of the, going, I gotta get in there.
Do you have an opinion on whether or not this forest is healthy?
Well, I can only see the forest from the edges, from some of the streets and people's backyards and all that sort of thing. Uh, the canopy's intact. That's the most important thing. I mean, healthy is a terrible word for a forest. That's a human word. Are people healthy? Right? The forest is a dynamic system. Trees. Live, they die, they fall, they regenerate. Now, everywhere in New Jersey, there's a bit of a problem with deer. Right? So, um, you know, you want to do things that might promote. Native tree regeneration, but, but most of the trees in this forest can live for three hundred and fifty years. It's only a hundred and twenty years old. So you've got a long time to fix. Those other problems. You know, hopefully, the science of restoration ecology is working on being able to fix all those things long before our time runs out.
Is there anything you would recommend that could ameliorate any of the problems here?
So I mentioned the one thing that would. I wish, I was always trying to get power companies to plant. Uh, Norway spruce or white pines or big evergreens. On the. Southern edges. Of their, of their power line cuts. Cause the sun comes in from the south, right? Cause the sun is. Since we're in the northern hemisphere. And so if you plant. Southern exposures with. Dense plantings of evergreens. Um, eventually over time, that would. Limit the amount of sunlight coming in, which dries everything out. That's, that's one of the worst things. The problem is, is that. That takes an immense amount of time. You know, and. Because you can't plant big things. You know, and because you can't plant big things.
Sure. In the long run.
Had somebody, had somebody planted those things, you know, fifty years ago around the edge of this whole place, then you would have more core forest from the point of view of sun and wind, but not from predators.
In, in the spirit of, you know, the best time to plant a tree was fifty years ago, the second best time's today. Is, is it worthwhile? Is, is that a condition that would make sense, that would be helpful down the road fifty years to, to plant a bunch of tall, eventually tall trees on the southern edges?
That, that's always helpful. If you have an edge, it's always good to try to prevent the sunlight from getting in.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Capra, do you have any questions for Dr. DeVito on his testimony?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Dr. DeVito. Can you speak to other benefits, um, maybe beyond biodiversity, other benefits of core forest? I think you've spoken some already, but.
Well, I mean, the this particular forest has maturing trees that are going to live a long time. And we know from recent studies that the trees here in northern New Jersey, the red oaks, the hickories, the maples, they're sequestering carbon faster than they ever have before. And there's a lot of, frankly, garbage out there about you have to cut down trees when they get to be a hundred years old because, you know, the forest isn't healthy or something. That's because red oaks are incredibly valuable and the timber industry is trying to think of reasons why you have to cut down a hundred-year-old trees. They're going to live another two-hundred years. And they're going to sequester incredible amounts of carbon and they're going to do it for another good hundred years. And, and that's the most important, right? If you're going to fight climate change, we have to fight it now. Not by planting a bunch of little trees. By the time they grow up and sequester carbon, any reasonable amounts of carbon, the battle's going to be over. Right? We have to fight climate change now by not. And most of the carbon is sequestered in the roots and in the soil. And so it, you know, when you plant a bunch of little trees, I mean, it takes, it takes fifty or sixty years before you even break even. Never mind actually start gaining carbon. So, um, right now, the, what we should be doing in New Jersey is protecting our maturing forests. And there's this thing about a young forest initiative, which is a bunch of smokescreen made up by the Fish and Wildlife Agencies because they want more deer and more huntable species. And so they're saying that we need to be logging our forests in order to create healthy forests, which is absolute garbage.
Um, yeah, one additional question, is, is there any difference, um, in, in your experience between edge forest and core forest as far as like drainage or stormwater runoff?
Uh, so over time, there would be a difference because alien species, alien plants, such as Japanese still grass and garlic mustard and all the species that come in on the edge, they have their annuals or short-lived perennials and they have really weak root systems. And lots of erosion starts to occur when you lose the native woody understory and the native woody root mass in favor of all these alien species that don't secure the soil. And so in the wintertime, you get tremendous amount of runoff and soil gets carried away. So that's a problem. Yeah. That appears to be a huge problem, even in all of our wild areas, where, where there's a lot of forest that's grown up on agricultural soil. These are, this is not here. There's post-agricultural forest, which is forest that has grown up that were, they were farms until World War One or World War Two, and now they're filled with, they look like forest. But the understory is nothing but alien weeds. And they don't help the soil because they're short-lived annual plants and they have weak root systems. But that's not here. This, this forest has, even though it's deer browse, those, that, those root systems are still intact and the soil is still intact. It's never been disturbed. And that's really important. That's where a lot of the sequestered carbon is.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. I have a question. So what would you do?
What would I do?
Here's the piece of land. What would you do? You're the expert.
I would find the money and save it.
Okay.
I know that that's hard to do, but that's what I would try to do so.
And it's not for sale.
Everything's for sale all the time.
Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
You have any questions, Mr. DeVito on his testimony, Mr. Hazel?
Yes, I do. Um, I'm hoping I'm not asking the same question.
No, that's fine.
But, uh, looking, looking at it from the opposite side, the other side, is there anything in the industry, best practices or so that, uh, same way we do now in design, green design to help the, uh, battling the impacts of, uh, uh, global warming, climate change. And so is there anything on the other side of the building side in design and so that puts any sort of a dent in, uh, the impacts that development in general can have?
Well, that's not my field. I mean, obviously, there are things that are done, right, to try to lessen carbon footprints of development, but I have no experience with any of that. All I am is a forest ecologist.
There you go. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Plucker, do you have any questions?
Yeah, ju- ju- just a couple. Mr. Dr. DeVito, thank you very much for your testimony. Um, I, I just have a couple of questions. Um, from an ecological or forestry point of view, is there any portion of the West Orange ordinances that the application doesn't comply with?
Not a.
That apply to this job?
Not aware, having to do with ordinances that, you know, there's anything that protects the species that are here, the trees that are here, the soil that's here. I do know that the West Orange Master Plan encourages the protection of biodiversity and natural resources. But I don't believe there's any ordinance that specifically, you know, is a, is a pinch point, so to speak, right?
Okay. And just since you referenced the West Orange Master Plan, do you know if this particular property is, uh, mentioned in the current West Orange Master Plan?
I, I was told that it has been the target of, you know, aspirations to be preserved. I don't know if it's specific to blocks and lot or anything like that.
So you haven't read anything in the West Orange Master Plan about this property, uh, being zoned for this particular development?
No, not zoned, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do any members of the public have any questions for Dr. DeVito on his testimony? Please raise your hand, come up, be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Dr. DeVito on his testimony? Please raise your hand, come up and be identified. Each person will have three minutes to ask questions. Go right ahead, sir. State your name for the record, sir.
My name is Victor Misardi. M-I-S-A-R-T-I. So I have a question about the deer fence, which, you know, you addressed already, but one of, oh, I'm sorry.
Just right, talk right into it.
Okay, I'll speak louder. Okay, okay. So my question is about the deer fence, like some other, um, testimony was saying that this was unhealthy forest because there were only big trees and no, wait, no small trees or no, you know, range of.
That's not true. There are no, that's not true that there are no small trees. There, there are, there is a, a very, very young age class that's rather sparse, but there are lots of mid-sized trees that are thirty, forty, fifty years old that are ready to fill canopy gaps as they form.
Great, great. So I, thank you, I, for clearing that up. So my question about the deer fence is if the deer, if the deer fence is excluding all the deer from eating smaller trees or something. Like, you know, I don't know, if you could address that, I don't, I don't really understand that. I don't understand what the deer fence is.
I put up many deer fences. I, I put one up thirty years ago in the Wachuk Reservation and inside the deer fence, uh, there's a lot of species that have colonized that area because the deer can't get in there. And, and make deer fences work in terms of allowing herbaceous plants and, and native shrubs like viburnums and uh, spice bush and witch hazel to be able to grow tall. Right now, those species are there, but they're browsed and they're tiny because they keep getting browsed. And the deer fence would allow them to flesh up and grow bigger, just like if you have bent something in your vegetable garden. But, but in terms of trees, the deer fence would have to last, to make a difference, the deer fence would have to last for not just these trees, but the sub-canopy that's already there and young trees that are thirty or forty years old. They're not being bothered by the deer. They're going to grow up and fill the canopy. So for a deer fence to impact the canopy of this forest, that fence would have to be up for about a hundred and fifty to two hundred years. And that's not going to happen, right? That there's nobody on God's green earth is going to maintain a fence for a hundred and fifty to two hundred years.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public have any questions for Dr. DeVito on his testimony? Please raise your hand, come up, be identified. Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. DeVito. I'm sorry, go right ahead.
With him.
Say your name for the record, sir.
Sax Willner. I'm an attorney at law of the state of New Jersey. Uh, and there's been some discussion regarding mitigation of the effects of the development. Uh, is there any mitigation that would, un- unless it created a core forest of fifty acres, it would make any difference, uh, for the core forest?
I want to make sure I understand your question. If we use the general principles for this type of upland, eastern deciduous oak hickory forest that edge effects go in three-hundred feet and ruin the interior forest conditions.
Yes.
Then if this development footprint is but where it's proposed, you might, like I said, you might be able to ameliorate some things by planting incredibly large white pines or Nor- Norway spruce or things that are long-lived and cast dense shade in order to keep the sunlight from entering the forest. But I don't think you can do it over a timeframe when it would make a difference because you can't plant ones that are big enough. And other than that, you can't do anything, core forest. If you're, if you have development within three-hundred feet of, anything within three-hundred feet of development is no longer core forest. That's an ecological fact. Right? That's why we're losing all the species. Because interior species need core forest and they hardly have any of it in this part of New Jersey. And so they're disappearing.
And even, uh, even those.
Nothing you can do.
Even those trees, however, uh, only do a partial mitigation.
Yeah, you're mitigating just one thing, which is sunlight and therefore the temperature and the, and the drying soil conditions.
Right, right. And with fifty-eight acres of core forest, uh, could you in any way have a twenty-nine acre development and have a core forest left that is, uh, that, that's, that functions as a core forest?
I haven't done the math. If all of development was put on one edge so that you leave a, because right now the development is gutting the, the interior of the forest, right? So, you know, it's total conversion to non-forest right in the middle of the core forest. If all the development was somehow pushed to one edge, then I can, you know, figure out how many acres of core forest would be left. And I don't know if it would approach fifty acres, but you, you know, you could, you could have a completely different site plan, but I don't think you can because you have wetlands on the western side and you have steep slopes, I think, somewhere on the eastern side. So where the development is put, obviously, all the numbers change, but doesn't look to me like you can protect core forest at this site if you develop it.
That's all I have. Mr. Alper, may I let you back?
I want to follow a question actually with Dr. DeVito.
Dr. DeVito, in terms of the edge versus invasive flora, what's the relationship of invasive plant species to edge? Is there, is there a relationship that we should know about?
There are greater number of an alien land species that colonize the edge than could colonize the shade of the interior of the forest. Alien species like soil disturbance. They like drought. They like heat. They like sunlight. They like elevated pH, which is a lower acidity. They like all of the things that are caused by the creation of an edge and being put up against an urban landscape, which many of those species actually come from the urban landscape. They're transported by landscapers. You know, they carry weeds all over the place. They dump weeds all over the place. You know, so, um.
So in terms of the question that was given before, oh, go ahead, sorry, I'm sorry.
So there's more species, greater density of those species because of the extra sunlight. Again, they like the sunlight. They like the drought. They're better competitors in harsh conditions. They're not sensitive. Forest species are sensitive. Alien invasive species, that's why they call them weeds, because they're not sensitive. They can grow anyplace. Especially where near people.
So in terms of what you were referring to in terms of the question earlier about water retention, uh, you were speaking to the fact that the native root mass has a greater role in water retention than the alien root mass, if you.
Yeah, yeah.
So in other words, if we have larger edge or dominate, dominant with edge, will we expect to see a greater alien root mass and less water retention over time?
And also greater erosion. Now, no one, you know, there are not, the engineers use numbers. This, this site is going to, you know, hold this much water, shed that much water. Those numbers change once down the road, as alien species become the dominant vegetation, those numbers are going to change and the soil is going to hold less water. It's going to get more compacted. It's going to be drier more of the time and dry soil takes a long time to get wet. It's hydrophobic. Right? That means it doesn't like water. It rains and if it's dry, it stays dry for a really long time and all the water is surface runoff until it starts to get wet. Think of putting Nestle's chocolate into a thing of milk, right? It takes a long time to stir it and takes a long time to get it wet. Well, that's what a dried-out forest is like that. It doesn't want, it doesn't accept the water right away because it's too dry. So that means there's more runoff.
Thank you. That covered my supplemental question.
Thank you.
Come right up.
Rachel Klein, Howell Drive. Um, so is, does any amount of deer fencing create core forest?
No, as I said, deer fencing has nothing to do with core forest. Deer fencing has to do with the plant community in the understory that if you're trying to protect some native wildflowers and shrubs and eventually tree regeneration a hundred years out. But not, but not core forest environmental conditions. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Ellen Hare and thank you for your presentation. Um, I just have one question. I'm new to this whole development plan and I just want some clarity. When I look at the map and I see the bright red, um, territory, am I correct in assuming that that is all deforested?
That was taken right from the site plan of the limit of disturbance. So yes, that's, everything is converted to non-forest.
So it is either one of four buildings or pavement or cement. It is.
Grass, perhaps, and, you know, beds, flower beds and buildings and pavement and sidewalks and whatever.
And does any of that, uh, edge of the red go further than three-hundred feet of those property lines in the Highlands?
I'm not sure what you're asking. Let me just, let me just.
Well, you might not have an answer. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just going to object because a- as a layperson, you can see that there is a portion of red in an area where there is zero building development. That, that's why I just, there is a site plan that can be viewed, but we're not doing testimony on that tonight. I'm just saying that. Oh, I have, you could talk about anything you want. I'm enjoying it, actually.
I'm, I'm asking how it's going to affect the community and that's why everyone's here. Thank you.
As far as I know, the red is open up disturbance, which means there's no forest there anymore. Can't put back forest. It's not possible. You can plant trees, you can make a plantation, you can plant shrubs, you can do whatever you want, but you can't make a forest. That soil is thousands of years old and we don't know how to put it back.
So the three-hundred, uh, I'm sorry, I'm Eric Henry. Um, so the three-hundred-foot border, that's a, that's an estimate, right?
Yeah, that's the estimate that's used for this type of forest in the issue of forest fragmentation and forest interior and that a whole science of forest fragmentation.
Okay, so in theory, could be more than three-hundred.
Well.
I mean, if it's an estimate, it could be, it could be more.
Because that's not what the evidence shows. If you go to, you go to a forest, once you get to. Because that's not what the evidence shows. If you go to, you go to a forest, once you get three hundred feet from the edge, you start seeing typical interior forest conditions. That's how we come up with that number.
Okay.
Surveying forest after forest after.
But in, in theory, it could be a little more, could be a little less.
Yes.
So if it is a little bit more, how, how much do we have left? Like nine acres or what did we say there's?
Let, let's suppose this was some type of uh, other kind of forest. Perhaps, uh, the Olympic rainforest in, you know, the west coast where the number that you would use is much bigger. So then you would say when you have a patch of forest this size, there is no core forest because nowhere are you far enough from the edge. If you're in the Pine Barrens of New Jersey where the edge effect is smaller, then you would say you have more core forest. But what we're using here is the number that's applied to the eastern deciduous.
Makes sense, but if it is an estimate, in theory, we could lose a little bit more than what we estimated. Well, so if you If it's an estimate, we could lose more.
So if the est- you, if the estimate is, if, if, if my three hundred number is inaccurate and let's say it's five hundred, then there is no core forest.
Exactly.
If it's a hundred and fifty, then there's more core forest. I'm using the best number.
You're using science, but I understand you're using science. It's an estimate, but it's an estimate. So in theory, my point is we could lose a little bit more than that and then it's gone and we can't get it back. That's it.
Well, but the, the amount that's left is already can't support anything.
Uh, exactly, right, exactly. Another question, uh, the deer in there, I mean, the deer fence, are we keeping them out or are we keeping, keeping them in? And how many acres does it, uh, does it take to support the deer?
From what I understand, the proposal to put up a deer fence is to help with the regeneration of plants on the ground where the deer feed and lots of people
Wait, wait, you have to wait to the, excuse me, sir. You have to wait till the answer is finished. The corporate has to take a complete record.
Lots of people put up deer fences because they want to see results on the forest floor by keeping the deer out from browsing everything inside every winter. Right? And, and, and deer fences work to do a certain thing. But I'm not talking about what deer fences do or don't do. I'm talking about what land development and the taking away of forest and the creation of edge does, which has nothing to do with the deer.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Please step up to the mics, say your name. Sure?
Uh, Orin Knights. Uh, thank you, Dr. DeVito for being here today. Um, I have two questions to ask. The first question is regarding the forest core. I'm not sure exactly the approximate size of that area, but my understanding is that approximately in the development, about five thousand trees are going to be cut down. So if five thousand trees is cut down, is that still considered a core forest in that space? Would that still be considered core forest?
Um, it doesn't matter how many trees are cut down. When the canopy, it doesn't matter if they were two hundred gigantic eight-foot you know, diameter trees that are four hundred years old or if they were eight thousand little trees that are this big. When you take away the forest canopy, you lose the forest conditions. So the development is going to wipe the slate clean. They might replant some trees. They might leave a patch of trees here or there. But it doesn't matter because the development envelope, the limit of disturbance is taking away the forest forever. And then, then all you have to do after that is look at what forest remains and talk about the conditions in that forest. It doesn't, I'm everything I've said tonight has nothing to do with how many trees they're going to remove. All it has to do is with the shape of the patch of forest that is not harmed and what happens to that. Right? That most of that turns from core forest into edge forest and the edge forest doesn't support the lesser, the more uncommon species that one would hope that the city of West Orange is trying to, you know, keep on the landscape.
And my second question is, um, in regards to concern for flooding. If the, that area is disturbed, development, um, how much effect would it have on the, on the forest edge? You mentioned about the, the retention of water. Would it be, um, would it impact as far as especially downhill? Because you don't have any it's disturbing the top, so it's going to rush down. But the fire, would the forest edge be able to contain that type of uh,
So the, the only thing, I'm not an engineer and I don't do stormwater calculations and there are going to be other people that testify to that, I believe. But the only thing that I can say is that the edge forest being more exposed to sunlight and more exposed to wind, the soil is going to dry out more quickly in any given time period. And when it's dry, it's going to be less accepting of a rainstorm. If a rainstorm, you've seen it all in your yard. If a rain comes gently, starts slowly, the ground gets wet and then, and the soil particles and then absorb water and the water can seep in. If the rain comes fast, a big summer thunderstorm, this thunderstorm is sometimes over and the ground has barely had a chance to accept any of that water and it all runs off as surface flow. It all depends on if you have sheet flow across the surface or if you have water percolating down into the soil. And if the soil starts out dry, it's not going to absorb a lot of water. On the other hand, if the soil is already wet, we had giant floods in New Jersey a couple of years ago because we had back-to-back-to-back heavy storms. So eventually the soil gets saturated. When the soil is saturated already, it might as well all be a rooftop because it can't hold any more water. So if the soil is too dry, it can't hold water. And if the soil is too wet, it can't hold any water. It only absorbs water when it's in that middle range where there's space between all the soil particles for water to go, but not so dry that it sheds water.
Thank you.
Hello, Pedro Singelis. Pedro Singelis. S I N G E L I S. Sorry, S I N G E L I S. Thank you for coming, Dr. DeVito. Um, I wanted to ask two questions, one related to what the gentleman before me just asked, which is about the watershed. So this forest, I believe, sits sort of saddling two watersheds and there's creeks that run off. Can you just speak from your perspective, from a forest ecologist, on how diminishing that forest or getting rid of that forest might affect the watershed? How many gallons of water, for instance?
I, I really can't. I, I, I'm not. I, I, I believe that most of this property is in the Canoe Brook watershed. I guess a couple of separate streams.
Dr. DeVito, I'm going to stop you right there. You, Doc? You didn't testify to that. He said he's not qualified to do that. Ask another question, please.
That's fine. Um, so just in general, um, how would you describe this, the state of, of New Jersey as, as opposed to our state of core forest remaining and our, and how threatened are those areas from invasive species?
Okay, I'm sorry. There's no testimony to that. We're talking about this application. That's broad brushstrokes and not this application. We really want to focus on this area. You can ask another question. He didn't testify to that.
Okay. Um, now I have to think about how to rephrase that question. Thank you. Um, uh, can you just speak a little bit about invasive species and how this development might uh, impact the, uh, what is already happening in, in West Orange and in greater New Jersey?
So.
I'm sorry, you didn't testify to inva- Doc, Doc, you didn't testify to invasive species in West Orange. You can focus on this plot.
Yeah, okay, this plot.
Only. Mr. Effra, what, what, where's it? Mr. Effron.
Uh, I'll repeat, I was pointed to not being at the mic. The witness did address the notion of species of special concern declining throughout New Jersey. And I followed up and said, well, why is that? And the witness said, Dr. DeVito said, because of fragmentation of forests. So he did get into in his direct testimony.
Right, but the
area. I just want to point that out in terms of
About this project, that's what the planning board needs to hear about this project. And we want to focus on this project. So if you want to testify because you have direct knowledge of invasive species, go right ahead. Uh, things invasive species in the town or in the state of New Jersey, that's for another night. We have to focus on this plot of land.
Well, invasive species are not unique to West Orange. Their, their life histories are pretty common no matter what town they're in, so.
This application is West Orange and that's what the planning board needs to hear. So if you want to testify to that because you have direct knowledge, that would be fantastic.
I think I can say one thing that bears on this, which is simply that this forest is on soil that has never been disturbed by agriculture and therefore it's somewhat resistant to invasive species. Because the root mass, the soil layers that have built up over thousands of years, the organic layer, the layer that rainwater leaches nutrients and then deposits them deeper, those things have been intact since the end of the Ice Age. Right? Because there's never been a plow on that mountain because it wasn't good for agriculture. And so those soils are resistant to invasive species because they have a high, they have a low pH and they are low nutrient and they don't attract invasive species, which are more or less species that like gardens and farms and disturbed ground and all the things that people do. Right? So this forest has been logged many times, right? It's not a virgin forest. The colonists came here and cut it down and they cut it down again and they cut it down again, but it probably hasn't been cut down since around World War One or something. And so, and the soil's never been disturbed appreciably and so resistant to invasive species. Matt, you can say.
And how long does it take to, uh, create an inch of soil?
I don't know. Too long.
Hundreds of years is what I've heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Cunningham and thank you, Dr. DeVito, for coming. My question is, can you clarify the difference between the canopy, the core? Because it seems like we've had discussion on how many trees will get cut down and that doesn't matter because of the canopy. Can you just?
Yeah, I can do that. I'm not talking about the places where trees are going to be cut down. I'm only talking about the place where development is not going to occur. Right? It's forest now and it's still going to be forest. The problem is because of the proximity of the development, what remains is going to have very little core forest because the conditions that a forest creates by having a canopy cool and green and shady are impacted by the development all around the edges. And so you lose the core forest conditions within three hundred feet in general in this type of forest. You lose those forest conditions within three hundred feet of the edge. There's already edge where all those houses are that have been built ages ago, right? They have already long been impacting that forest, but the interior is still good. And this development is going right in the interior and that's going to repeat that process. And then the only thing that's left as core forest are those two little tiny purple outlined areas, magenta outlined areas.
And that does, is not considered, those two areas are really not canopy. They don't
No, no, they're going to have their forest canopy. The, the only reason, the only reason they're still acting as interior core forest is because they're far away from the disturbance.
But they're nine acres.
Yeah, that's right. Altogether.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Susan Panulo. And, uh, thank you very much, Dr. DeVito, for coming here and, uh, educating us. I have a few questions, I guess, uh, hinging off of the three hundred foot, um, estimate concept for this particular development. So assuming that three hundred foot is flat, then how is the three hundred foot estimate impacted by steep slope terrain?
It's not.
Okay, thank you. How about wetlands?
It's not.
And does basalt bedrock matter?
That, uh, no, I'm, this, this is an upland fairly dry soil because it's a thin soil on that bedrock oak hickory forest. And that's the kind of forest that I'm using that three hundred foot number. It doesn't matter. If, if the soil was slightly different, but it was still a fairly dry, thin soil, it could be on a different type of mountain in New Jersey. There are all different mountains in New Jersey, but the forest is basically the same. Right? Oak hickory, dry soil, somewhat, uh, you know, this, this forest doesn't have any steep north-facing slopes where you would get hemlocks and sugar maples or things like that. It's basically a sunny, dry mountain top. And that's the number I'm using. And that could be basalt, it could be, uh, metamorphic rock. This is igneous rock, right? It's a lava flow. It could be metamorphic rock in the Highlands of New Jersey. You can't tell the difference between those forests because since the Ice Age, they've built up soil and that soil is pretty much the same. The bedrock is largely irrelevant at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DeVito. Um, I've enjoyed your testimony. You, oh, sorry, Michael Henningberg, H E N I N G B U R G. You, you mentioned the term that I had never heard of before. You talked about a drunk.
Really? Okay, you, you Sorry. Uh, you mentioned a term called a dry forest. I, I had not heard that term before. And you talked about that being exacerbated by this development and in particular going kind of around, around the development on the side of the mountain?
So every, every forest runs along a continuum from very dry soils to very wet soils. The very wet soils are your lowland swamps where the water soils are almost always saturated. The very dry forests on slopes that face south into the sunlight, like some of the Watchong Ridge. You know, this, there'd be a slope that the sun is almost hitting it perpendicular. Those tend to be very dry soils. Because they're on hard bedrock of various types. The soil is not very thick. It dries out very quickly. So here, what you have is a ridge top, which also has very, very thin soil. It dries out quickly. And in droughts, it can get very dry. And there, you know, I, I said a dry forest, if I was speaking to a scientific audience, I would say a xeric forest. Some people, you've heard the word xeriscapes or something like that, where they say, let's plant species in your yard that are tolerant. They don't need to be watered, right? Because they, they like, they can do well in a dry landscape. So, so, you know, you could, you could say music, which is wet and xeric, which is dry, or you could just use the word dry so that you don't confuse people.
The, the reason I'm asking is I'm very concerned about wildfires and I'm curious whether what they're doing here is going to exacerbate the dry forest and perhaps make it more susceptible to wildfires. Which we're experiencing in New Jersey all over.
These forests are generally not very susceptible to wildfires. They become susceptible during extreme droughts like we had last fall. We had some wildfires in North Jersey recently during extreme droughts. I doubt that, um, you know, this this forest, the proposed development is not going to change whether or not the wildfire risk goes up, you know, that much more quickly. The problem, the problem here is that, um, by having a development in the middle of the forest and, and you know, you, you can't defend that development from a wildfire, right?
I don't think so.
If a wildfire starts on the western end of this forest during a drought and the winds are blowing sixty miles an hour, like we saw on the Pine Barrens the other day, you no fire management in the world can stop a wildfire when the winds are blowing fast, but that's that's not going to change. I mean, those, those folks that are on the eastern side of this patch of forest are much at risk now as they are, as, as they will be, because if the wind is blowing strong enough, you can't stop a wildfire. That's a fallacy to think. That's a fallacy to think that people can stop a wildfire. You just saw it in California. They couldn't do anything. When the wind is blowing strong enough, you can't do anything. And that, and that is caused by extreme drought conditions. It's, it's not going to be impacted by whether or not there's a couple of buildings up there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Dr. DeVito on his testimony? Please stand up and be identified. Mr. Ephraim, final question, sir.
Thank you. One of the questions from the public asked whether there is canopy on the edge as well as the core. And you said, you know, any forest has a canopy. But you also said earlier, the core can, the canopy helps create the core conditions. Is there a distinction between the canopy on the edge and the canopy in the core?
The distinction is that on the edge, you have sunlight and wind coming in. So the canopy is not effective in creating those interior conditions. Because you need that, you need that acreage of forest that's protected from wind and sunlight to have that high humidity and low temperature maintain itself during the course of the day. On the edge, you lose the humidity that you accumulate overnight, right? In the morning, you get up and there's dew and it's moist. When you're on the edge, that evaporates in no time. When you're deep in the forest, those conditions stay for hours on end, and you have a much more moist condition. There's less wind. You know, if you want to cool off in the summer, go into the middle of a forest.
Thank you. That's all I have. I got to come.
Mr. Klein.
So you said it's 300 feet, the edge, all the way around for this particular location, this type of, can you, could you have surveyed it and actually found the edge? In other words, on the shady side, it's still 300 feet. On the side that doesn't get the wind, it's still 300 feet? It's really just 300?
No, I mean, if you were to, if you were to go and look at the slope in every particular spot, you know, you could adjust things here or there. But, I mean, so in some places, the edge would be a little bit, you would, you would say, well, this is going to create edge even more over here. And in some other places, you might say it's going to create edge a little bit less, like on the north side.
So you're saying it's more of an average?
It's like an average.
Okay, all right, all right. And then you, you mentioned something about logging on this property?
Yeah.
Did you say logging on this property?
Forest is about 120 years old. These mountains had no trees on them in the middle of the 1800s.
Because they were.
Everything was cut for firewood. People had to cook.
So it was cut, but it wasn't, the soil wasn't disturbed?
No, it was just cut. Our, our forests have been cut over many times, right?
And it doesn't disturb the soil when they do that?
Not much, no.
Okay.
No, they just, they just came in, they cut all the timber and dragged it off. And, but it was never plowed. The soil horizons going down were never disturbed. Because nobody needed to know when, there was no agriculture.
But when a tree falls, when they drag the tree, that's not similar to plowing?
Well, they didn't drag the root stumps. They cut the tree.
Right.
And they dragged the tree out, and that only touches the organic matter at the surface. Right? It doesn't turn over, turn over the soil rise. Now, trees blow over in windstorms, and you, you could, whoops. You see, you know, you can see that we pull up soil from deep underneath, and that happens very slowly, and that impacts the soil horizons a little bit. Of course, of centuries, but that's, you know, minute compared to the whole area.
Okay. And then when you talk about the alien species, they're weeds, they're, they're bad? They're always bad in the edge?
Good and bad are good words. It's like.
Beneficial, not, not beneficial?
Alien species are almost never beneficial. Now, that's not a hard or fast rule. We have, you know, Russian olive growing up in all of our farm fields in northern New Jersey. And it's terrible. It makes monocultures. It doesn't let any other species in. But roomy-throated hummingbirds like it because they feed on the flowers when they get here. On, you know, they just got here last week, and then they're feeding on the flowers of Russian olive. So it's good for one little thing. But by and large, it's, it's stopping hundreds of species of moths, butterflies, the food chain. There's no, there are no insects eating the leaves. And so there's no food chain. That's one of the reasons that critters disappear is that in the edge, you have all these alien species, and they're, they don't have any insects living on them, so their food web is gone.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have one, one question.
Mr. Plucker.
Um, Mr. DeVito, and I'll qualify my question because I appreciate you did qualify before that you are not a professional engineer. But you did give some general testimony about storms, storms and water. As, as not being an engineer, is it fair to say that in your testimony, you did not consider the stormwater design plan that's a part of this application, which has already been approved by the DEP?
No, I didn't do that. All I did was talk about, I mean, I've dug a million soil bits in my life as an ecologist. I'm talking about, you know, whether or not soils can absorb water when they're wet, when they're dry, you know, in the forest. I'm not talking about your engineering.
Yeah, thank you.
And is it fair to say that what you discussed in terms of, thank you. Is it fair to say that what you discussed in terms of dry soil, water runoff, flooding, et cetera, is within the scope of your expertise as a forester and forest ecologist?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Dr. DeVito. Mr. Ephraim?
I'm going to break then.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say there's several people in the Zoom audience who have their hands raised. And I'd just like to make an announcement as a reminder that we are not entertaining public comment from the Zoom audience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Ephraim, we're going to take a five-minute break before your next, uh, and if you have anything that needs to be put on PowerPoint. Perfect. Okay, five-minute break. Thank you.
So I got a picture of my granddaughter.
Oh, okay. I'm not too sure what I'm looking at.
It's a face and hair.
Okay.
She's still in utero.
I figured that.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen on Zoom. Members of the audience, Mr. Ephraim, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next witness and the only other witness for this evening is Professor Luke Butler, Dr. Butler, from the College of New Jersey. And he is going to speak to. from the College of New Jersey. And he is going to speak to, he's an expert in, he's an avian bio, he's a zoologist and an avian biologist whose focus is on the physiological and biological aspects of avian life, particularly with respect to the effects of human disturbance. And so he's going to speak to these issues. And so I can now call Dr. Luke Butler.
What's the first name? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Luke, L U K E.
Okay, I have to say. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and spell it, please, for the record.
Luke, L U K E. Butler, B U T L E R.
Thank you. I understand you have a PhD in zoology?
Yes, from University of Washington in Seattle.
Thank you. And when did you get your PhD?
Two thousand and five.
Thank you. And you're presently on the faculty of the College of New Jersey, is that correct?
Correct, in the Department of Biology.
And how would you describe your area of expertise that you're bringing to this meeting tonight?
So I'm, I would call myself an avian biologist. And I have specific expertise in avian life histories, which is the different stages of life, life that birds exhibit at different times of the year. And then, in particular, the behavior and physiology of birds. In particular, even in more particular, I've conducted multiple studies on the effects of human disturbance on avian physiology and behavior.
And how long have you been on the faculty of the College of New Jersey?
Sixteen years.
And are you, what's your rank?
Associate professor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We offer Professor Butler for the purposes described.
Have you been to this forest?
Yes, well, not in it, but to it.
Surrounding?
Yes.
So your testimony is from the periphery of the forest and mostly based on hypothesis of what is going on inside the forest?
Well, yeah, I have observations. And so I do know some things about what's going on. And then I'm also, I do have predictions that I'm going to make based on what I've seen. Things can be extrapolated to things I have not been able to see, but would be seen if somebody were to do an extensive study.
But you haven't done an extensive study?
Uh, no.
The purpose of his testimony is to speak to the effects of human disturbance on an existing forest in terms of its relationship to avian life in a typical eastern forest. So that obviously one can't study the destructive effects until the development is built. But the purpose is to speak to what happens to the life cycle of these animals in terms of human disturbance, which is relevant to the need for an ecological study, which is in the settlement agreement and the ordinance.
Bruce, can you point to where there is a need for an ecological study? Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, the settlement agreement actually specifically states that there shall be an environmental review conducted by Wayne DeFeo of this project. And it does not limit it in any way to any particular area of environmental impacts. And therefore, if the forest will disappear, as the prior witness has said and made clear, then the impact on wildlife in that forest is obviously relevant to the environmental review that the settlement mandates.
Okay, I believe that's taking a very biased view of the settlement agreement, Mr. Efron. I'm not done talking. I'm not done talking.
Okay, okay, okay. Gentlemen, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask, this is a colloquy between the two attorneys. They're great advocates. One at a time, gentlemen, we'll hear you out. Mr. Plock.
Just for the record, there is nothing that requires an ecological study in the settlement agreement or the ordinance.
The settlement agreement expressly requires an environmental review by Wayne DeFeo. It does not limit it solely to the question of a deer fence. It requires an environmental review. Period. And those words are unequivocal, and they are within the scope of what, what we're offering is within the scope of that.
I'm trying to parse the language. So the board hears more, and the public hears more information besides if the trees are gone because something's built there, there'll be less birds.
I'm not sure that it was to be that trivial a presentation.
But um, but if there are less trees, there's probably less birds.
If you destroy the forest, you destroy the capacity of bird species to engage in their normal life history.
As your expert said before, we're not talking about the word destruction. Right? We have other words that we're going to use. So there's going to be less, there's going to be less core forest using his words. Okay, so there's less volume of something where birds live. I'm not trying to overcome what's going on. I'm trying to have the board understand the value of the information in the public, the value of the information.
Well, you have two types of forests, edge and core.
Right.
As the edge grows, the types of species change. And that was made clear with Mr. Dr. DeVito. So clearly, when you convert from core to edge, which is what the prior witness has spoke to, you're going to have species change and interchange. It's not just a matter of losing numbers. It's a matter of the environmental impact from this development that will cause this species interchange and changes in the nature of what lives here.
And I think the public will correct me if I'm wrong, that the public is interested in trees. And I don't want to, I don't want to make less of the turtle, the snake, or the salamander. But as we look at this, the planning board is looking at the effect of trees and carbon dioxide transference. And I am not arguing that there will be not an impact on other woodland creatures. But the public that is in the room tonight, and I'm sure online is thinking more about trees. And I will allow this and will, will keep it slow and focused on this forest and things that will happen here and not vastly in the state of New Jersey, if you can. Okay?
Our intention was to focus on this forest, but obviously his knowledge about eastern forests in New Jersey is, is how we focus that discussion.
And if we're all agreed, let's proceed.
And we are intentioned with.
Yeah, I would just like to make the same statement I made last time. I believe that this area of testimony, whatever it may be, it seems that it would be a subject matter that is outside the jurisdiction of this board at a planning board hearing.
I understand, I understand your objection, we'll hear it. And, and at the end of everything, gentlemen, we'll both have opportunities to discuss with the board as we deliberate.
And I do wish to apologize to my good friend, Mr. Parker, for interrupting him. I was only going to say, of course, both of us have a biased view of the document. That's our job to present different views.
That's all right. We'll bring the air conditioning key next time, Bruce.
Go right ahead, sir, Doc.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Efron. Bruce, the next time you ask me to do something like this, I will not be following, following Dr. DeVito. I feel like I feel like a bit of an opening act here right now. Thank you so much. So what you'll see with what I have to say tonight is my scope of the content and the topic that I'm going to address about this parcel of land is much narrower than what Dr. DeVito addressed. So yeah, basically, what I'm going to tell you about is what's on the title. So I observed, I took some observations of the bird community at the woodlot, at this parcel. And then I have some ideas and some predictions about what's, what the bird life is likely to be like throughout the, throughout or in different parts of the parcel. And then I'll give a little bit of a discussion on, on area sensitivity and what that looks like for birds. And I'm not going to present on any other type of animal tonight except birds, but one, very often, things in one type of vertebrate especially work similarly in other types of vertebrate at a broad scale. So I'm going to be talking about birds, but but in animal ecology, many of the laws or the rules kind of operate similarly across taxonomic groups. So as I've said, what I'm going to, I'm going to talk about three things. I'm going to talk about observations of a subset of the bird life at the site. I'm going to give some predictions about what I think the overall bird life at the site is like. And I'm going to give some predictions about the, how I think the proposed development will change the bird community at the site. And I'll get more into the concept of a bird community in a minute. So just to let you know, going back to the chairman's question about, did I conduct an extensive study? I did not. I, I've visited the periphery of the site. I have not had access to the interior of the site. The yellow polygons on the screen show the places where I either stood or walked and listened or looked for birds for the amounts of time that you can see in those text boxes.
For the record, then, since there are no page numbers, I don't mean to interrupt, but we should keep track of this. This is a slide headed number one, observations of a subset of the bird life at the site.
Was this marked? Or were submitted in advance?
It was submitted today, and I understand that it's not been marked. I understand that there might be a need for board members to review this again. And of course, we would bring Mr. Professor Butler back if need be. But we should mark it as the next objectors exhibit.
I think we're up to what, oh, twelve?
Yeah, I don't know whether Dr. DeVito's was marked formally. That had been submitted a couple of months ago.
I think it was on the agenda, though. I don't know if it was marked as a separate exhibit.
We marked DeVito CV and color designed by Ecological Solutions. Was that DeVito's? Yes.
One of the slides, but then.
That was one slide, but then there was a ten slide set that had been submitted for the prior meeting.
So DeVito CV was oh, six. The colored slide was oh, seven. I don't know which one the other ten slides was, but this one is definitely oh, twelve.
Maybe we should make the, the ten set oh, seven dash A, just so we're clear.
There is an item on the agenda, Ms. McGovern. There's a slideshow. And I believe that's what Mr. Efron is referring to.
The entire slideshow will be oh, seven, then.
Okay.
Because that one slide was part of that.
I think that's right.
So that was probably the first one, and I just called it that in my notes.
Right now, exhibit oh, seven, it says West Orange Forest Core Map twenty twenty-five. And then right under that, it is not marked as a specific exhibit, but it says West Orange DeVito Slide Presentation.
Yeah, it is meant to be one document, I believe.
All right. Right, so oh, twelve is going to be Dr. Burks.
Butler.
Slideshow, or Butler, I'm sorry. And how many slides are there, Doctor?
Eighteen.
Okay, so it'll be Dr. Butler's slide presentation, eighteen slides. And then I don't know, what is oh, eight, D A one, colorized by Washford objector. I have my notes. Do you have something different, Chairman? And then oh, nine says colorize D A C.
I don't.
Okay, so let's just for purposes of the record, we'll do oh, thirteen will be the slideshow from Dr. DeVito, just, just to make sure we have it.
And just for a housekeeping record, I think the board is doing an excellent job of maintaining everything on the agenda. But it doesn't appear that all of the O exhibits are actually marked as O exhibits on the agenda. So if it would be possible to amend that.
I appreciate Mr. Plock saying that because we had some questions about making sure things were fully posted.
Color diagram by Ecological Solutions, the one slide was marked oh, seven, but then the balance of it, which was how many slides altogether?
Ten, I believe.
Ten.
Total was ten.
DeVito will be thirteen. All right, I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt your testimony. So you're oh, twelve.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you can, you've had plenty of time now to study how much time I spent at each of these sites. And as you can see, the total is only around a little over two hours, two hours and five minutes total time at these four different points. And so I walked at the, along Howell Drive, and I mostly stood around at three to the south, on the south side. And these were good conditions to watch birds. It was a nice mornings, nice mid-days. And in that short sample, I detected twenty species of birds. These are the twenty species. I'm sure you know, a lot of these are backyard birds. A lot of you are probably familiar with them. And very, almost none of these were a surprise to me. If I hadn't seen these, I would have been surprised. This is exactly what you'd expect at this time of year, exactly where I was standing in a quality forest that contains typical bird life. Especially where I was standing in between the forest and neighborhoods. So as you can see, as I mentioned, several of these birds are kind of like backyard birds, and they're actually not forest interior birds. So I'm going to skip ahead to that first. So only seven of the species that I saw were really, you'd really consider a forest bird species. The rest of them are backyard birds. It's exactly typical for where I was standing, which is on the, in the margin between a forest and open space like, like a lot of the neighborhoods around here. And so this is a very expected result. I forgot to mention, I probably should have told Mr. Efron to bring this into the record. I've been teaching courses on birds in, in New Jersey, and the species up here barely differ from the species where I teach my courses. Doing bird surveys for almost my entire time as a professor, also doing adult education courses where we go out and survey birds. So I'm extremely confident in these IDs. I have zero doubt about these. These identifications or, or the, the groupings that, that I saw. So.
Could you just identify the seven species on the slide?
Well, sure, the seven forest species that are highlighted right now are billated woodpecker, red-bellied woodpecker, blue jay, black cat chickadee, tufted titmouse, white-breasted nuthatch, and then in the lower left is a worm-eating warbler. So part of this could seem maybe, you know, maybe not impressive, or maybe impressive, depending on how you think about how much time I spent looking. So one of the things I did was I, I analyzed my, the detections of new species that I made, the longer I surveyed. And so what this figure is showing you along the, along the horizontal axis is the amount of time that I had spent observing. So you can see it goes from zero time before I ever got up here, up to one hundred and twenty-five minutes. And then on the Y axis, what you're seeing is the percent of all the species that I showed, that I've observed at that point in time. So of course, by the end of my observations, I saw one hundred percent of the species I was going to see. And before I started, I hadn't seen any of them. But what you can see is that in the first twenty minutes, I saw almost seventy-five percent of the species I was going to see. And adding another hour, almost ninety minutes to that, I only added in additional six or seven species. So the reason for that is because the birds are abundant. Every time I went to another site, I saw more individuals of the same species. I was counting them over, not counting the same individuals over and over up because I was moving around. But I was counting the same species again and again. I was seeing lots of different species. And, and what this pattern suggests is given the fact that there's still an increase here where the, as I continue to survey, I detect more and more species, it does suggest that an extensive study, the line would continue to go up and more and more species would be detected over time. That's just what you'd expect when you have, when you sample something out in space like that on a landscape, especially something that can fly around like birds. So I for sure didn't max out what could be observed. If I stood at those points for longer, I would surely observe more species. This is just a summary table or a summary slide, just to make sure all of the components of my, my study are, are tracked. And one thing I wanted to mention is among the twenty species, there's fourteen different families of birds. So in, in taxonomy or organismal biology, relatedness is nested. So closely related species are things that are taxonomically ordered right next to each other, and distantly related species are nested farther apart. In this case, I observed fourteen different families of birds, and a whole family is like, all the woodpeckers are in the same family. All the sparrows are in the same family. The corvids, the crows, the blue jays, those are all in the same family. So seeing fourteen different families really tells you there's fourteen different, very, very different kinds of birds. And then within some of those families, there's multiple species. So within the parity, which are the chickadees, or chickadees and tit, there's chickadees and titmice were there. Within the woodpeckers I saw or observed, three species, flicker, billated woodpecker and red-bellied woodpecker.
Can I just suggest Professor Butler talk a little slower?
Oh, sure.
Out of pity for the court reporter.
Excuse me. Okay, let me think more slowly. Did anybody, did anybody want me to, this is like a lecture right now. Did anybody want me to go back to anything?
No.
No? Okay, thanks. So I, I had prefaced that I was going to make a prediction about what kinds of birds I think are probably there. Because I have only a small sample. I only sampled for about two hours. I only saw about twenty things. And as you saw, I was not able to go inside to sample. But one of the, one of the kind of kind of, I don't know, rules or laws in this type of biology is you, species tend to occur in associations or assemblages. So for example, when I got there and stepped out of the car and heard my first red-bellied woodpecker, I immediately thought, I bet there's northern flickers here. I bet there's hairy woodpeckers here. I bet there's downy woodpeckers here. Because if you find a red-bellied woodpecker and you're looking at a forest, you're probably going to find these other species because they tend to co- Because if you find a red bellied woodpecker and you're looking at a forest, you're probably gonna find these other species because they tend to co-occur. So that's sort of an example I have on the screen here where I, I did see the six species in the lower left. I didn't see the species on the right, I didn't hear them, I didn't see them, but I know they're there. I have no, absolutely no doubt they're hairy and downy woodpeckers in those woods. I don't need to see them because I've already seen these six other species that are nearly always associated with those two other species. So based on what I saw, both in terms of the bird life and the habitat I saw. And also I looked at the eBird reports, some of you, if you're birders, you probably report to eBird. eBird is actually a curated database that's user-generated, where people report their bird sightings. But this, but it's, it's monitored by Cornell Lab and they keep track and make sure that the data are clean and people don't report that they saw flamingo or something. And I, I know this for a fact because I've received a couple of emails myself at saying, are you sure you saw that? And I just want to point to my signature and be like, do you see, do you see who I am? Just kidding, I would never do that, but I get them myself, they even questioned me, did I, did I really see that thing? So I looked at those for the surrounding parcels of land. There's, I think there's one called Highland Preserve or Reserve, and there's Eagle, Eagle Bluff or Eagle Rock. Right, so those two areas are somewhat comparable, they're, they're in terms of at least size. And they have around 100, 170 species, but they also have water sources. So they're gonna get a lot of ducks and water birds that aren't at this site. So just based on what I saw, what I saw in terms of habitat, what I saw in terms of bird life, and what's just likely to be at a site this big in this location, I think there's at least 100 different species of birds that could be found on this site. That also is varies on an annual basis. So if you were to go out in June, you'll get among, you'll, you'll get among the maximum numbers of species at the same time. Whereas if you go out where I, when I went out now, you're somewhere in between the lows of the winter and the highs of the summer. But I think it's, I think it's very likely that at least 100 species of birds could be found on this, on this parcel with enough study. And looking into the size of the parcel and the amount of interior forest that's there, I also think it's very likely that a handful at least of what are considered interior bird species, so they're the species that are affected by those ecological ecological factors or processes that Dr. DeVito described. I think at least about five, at least these species and probably several more so-called interior species probably nest on the site. Again, that's something that could be discovered or studied with onsite access. I did see, I did see a worm-eating warbler on the site. The other ones are just almost, almost definitely gonna be there based on the site, the habitat and the species that I did see. So that's by what I saw and then part two was what I think in general about the bird community there. And so the, the next part of what I want to talk about is how I think the community of birds in that site will change based on what I understand about the proposed development. And the short version is that the interior species, Chairman Baghoff scooped me a little bit here, but it's a little more complicated than just less birds. Interior species as, as a component of biodiversity are likely to decline or disappear, decline in numbers or disappear altogether. Whereas edge or open habitat species are likely to increase in numbers or appear newly in places that they don't currently appear on the parcel. So for example, going back to my page of 20, some of these species are unlikely to occur in the core forest right now. If maybe ever, or you might find them rarely using that habitat coming from open habitat or edge habitat into the core for some function. But with the development that's proposed, opening up all that space in the middle will introduce almost all these species. And what will have been an interior forest bird community will turn into a typical backyard bird community. Not there's anything wrong with that. I love the backyard birds, but as Dr. DeVito said, we have a lot of backyards. We don't have a lot of patches of forests of this size, especially in this part of the world. And so I wanted to give you a little information about how, what it looks like when birds exhibit sensitivity to the amount of forest, the, the size of the forest patch that they're found in. So starting off with a species, this is a flycatcher species called a peewee. And what you see on the horizontal axis, this is from, I should mention, this is, this is a, from a, in my field, a kind of a legendary study, which I don't know if any of you are like scientists in like molecular or cellular biology, but in my field, this, as, as a paper with over 1,000 citations, this goes up on this, like, you know, we have this hung up on the wall and, you know, printed out in platinum. In other fields of science, that's nothing, but in this type of sciences, this paper is a classic. That's where this figure comes from and they generated the data by sampling almost 500 different points in lots of different habitats. And the bird communities where they worked in the mid Atlantic are almost identical to the bird communities here, the species that are found, they're almost identical. So this first example is an example of a species that its occurrence doesn't change no matter how big the size of the forest patches that you go and study. So they went into very large forest patches at this end of the scale. And they went into smaller forest patches and they went into really little tiny forest patches. And they had an equal likelihood of finding eastern peewees across that entire range of forest sizes. So this is a species that doesn't care how big the patch of forest is. It's not, it's not size sensitive, or it's not sensitive to, to the amount of, to the size of, to the size of the forest that it's found in.
For the record, this is the slide headed Eastern Wood Peewee, P E W double E.
So this one's actually zoomed in, I'm not, there's the slide. So this is non-sensitivity. This is what the same figure looks like for what's considered a area sensitive species or interior species, the wood thrush. So it's the same study, same sampling design and a same scale on the X axis of forest area. But what you can see is as the forest gets smaller and smaller, the probability of a, of a wood thrush occurring gets smaller and smaller. The maximum probability of finding a wood thrush anywhere, even in the biggest forest is only about 80% using their study design. But if you, as you, as you make the forest smaller and smaller along the scale, the, that, that, that chance goes from about point eight down to about point three. I should say the dash lines on either side are a indication of the statistical confidence of the solid line in the middle. So this is the difference between a, can you zoom out, please, thank you. Difference between an insensitive species and a sensitive species. And seeing how this affects the numbers in terms of the size of an actual parcel. What I've done here is I've marked about a 58 acre, 58 acres on this X axis here, which equates to around 25 hectares. And so in a 25 hectare patch, you have about a 70% likelihood of detecting a wood thrush, which is almost the maximum, no matter how big you get. So you've reached a plateau. Whereas if you shrink the size of this forest down to a, say, a five acre patch, your likelihood goes down to about 50%. So you have about a 50/50 chance of detecting a wood thrush from that amount of, a size of a patch loss. So that's on a scale, on a maximum of 80%, that's about a 30% drop. And this is what I was hinting or mentioned earlier, where many of these basic concepts, basic concepts apply across species. These are what are, these are the same analyses for what are considered forest sensitive bird species. And in every case, what you can see is that as the forest patches get smaller, the likelihood of that bird occurring there during the breeding season gets lower and lower.
For the record, this is the slide with four graphs lined up next to each other.
And I, I strongly believe all four of these species could be, could, would, could breed in this, in this parcel of land, most especially the top two and the red-eyed veria woodthrush November bird. Scarlet tanger, I think is a good likelihood, but that would be the one I would, I would, it would be sort of fourth on my list of, of hoping to find it there. So going back to the concept of like, you take away habitat, you have fewer birds. That's not true. Sometimes you take away habitat, you have more birds, but you have birds that are there for the new habitat. So this is data from the exact same study that I've been showing you. And what you can see is that as you, as you shrink the size of a forest patch, you get more and more American robins. And you get the most American robins when the forest, when there's just little patches of woods for them to use, but they mostly hang out in the open areas. So that's a native species, they, you know, they, they, they contribute ecosystem functions. You know, we like robins, they, they sound pretty, they look pretty. And they're, you know, ecologically, they, they serve a function in the system that they're in. But the other thing that you do when you convert contiguous habitat into habitat that's disturbed and especially dominated by human development, is you tend to add numbers and the occurrence of exotic invasive species. So the example on the right is a European starling, which is an exotic invasive species. You can see how much it detests large patches of forest and how much more likely it is to occur as the patches of forest get smaller and smaller. And as an example, European starlings are a particular menace to native birds because they usurp them from their cavity nests. They'll kill chicks, they'll destroy eggs, they'll even kill adults if they can. So not only do they compete for space, directly compete for space, they'll also directly cause mortality in native species. So this is what, this is the, this is the birds you add when you take away forest space. And the, the threats aren't just to, I think I mentioned it a moment ago in terms of what European starlings can do to cavity nesting birds. But it's not just a survival or longevity of adults or those type of aspects of the biology of the birds. But specifically within the nesting stage, it's a very particular time of year among life histories of all these different species. And you can see that in wood thrush, their nesting success drops to one, about one in 10 nests succeeds in a forest patch that's about 10 hectares, which is not that small of a forest patch, actually. The forest patches that are about, they're probably gonna be left in, in, in the proposal are around in this area of the scale. And so it's not just a direct mortality or sort of abiotic effects, but it can, it can also just be strong effects on particular life history stages.
Can you identify, go back to that if you can? What was the hectare size where you said the graph showed an analogy to what will be left here?
This one? This one here?
I know, the last, last graph, the scattergram. Yes, you pointed to several of the dots and I, and you said that's analogous to what will be left here. How many hectares on that scale were you referring, acres or hectares were you referring to?
Four dots.
Yeah, there's four dots near the corner.
Right, oh, sorry, sorry.
You circled the four dots near the corner and said that's analogous to the size of this acreage. How does that translate into hectares? So we can have a point of.
So this is a log scale, so it's a little tricky to judge where we are because the intervals between, interval between 10 and 20 is about this big and the interval between 20 and 30 is about that big and then 40, 50, 60, 70, 90 are all jammed in here. So this is probably around 30 hectares, which is a, is a little smaller than the forest that'll be left, I believe, if the proposal.
Thirty hectares equates to around nine acres, is that what you're saying? Or, yeah, in other words, we're, we're trying to, first of all, how many hectares equate to an acre since most of us think in terms of acres?
Two and a half acres per hectare.
Okay, so when, when you speak of 30 hectares, are you referring to the existing core forest or what are you referring to?
Let's see, so yeah, I wrote that down. The core forest, well, so sorry, for the total, the total habitat size of the plot is 143 acres, which is about 58 hectares. So six, around 60 hectares is about right here currently, that's what's currently there.
Okay.
And then after development, it's to drop to about 45 hectares. So that would move us about, to about here on the scale. So you, you have to fit a line to estimate what the change is, it's probably about a 10% drop across that scale. A 10% drop in nesting success.
Are you, are you referring to, when you say 45 hectares will be left after development, I want to be clear, we're speaking about the same.
That's, that's total forest, not, not just core forest.
That's total forest?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Not just core forest, the core forest patches are, are much smaller.
That would be about three hectares.
Three to five, it looks like you're about three to five hectares.
How do you spell hector? What is that?
H E C.
H U?
H E C T A R E. Right, so, so the nine acres is around three hectares. And what you're saying is leftover of both edge and core after development is around 45 hectares.
Yes.
Okay, I wanted that to be clear so we all understood.
Yeah, that's how I have it, Dr. DeVito might be able to correct, correct me on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But please continue, I interrupted you, but please continue.
I mean, I think the thing to take away from this is that's a very strong relationship. So kind of, and it's a very straight relationship, so no matter where you are on that line, you're gonna have a drop in nesting success likely with a shrinking of the size. This is just one aspect, just to focus on one aspect of one life history stage of this area sensitive species. And then one other sort of ecological process or each ecological phenomenon that will occur with the proposed development is the, the increased occurrence of a brute parasitic species called brown-headed cowbird into much more of the forest at this site than they are probably currently occurring. So brown-headed cowbirds have an interesting history with humans, they are adapted to following birds of wild ungulates in the Midwest, the Great Plains. But as humans deforested the East Coast, they moved into that open habitat and started parasitizing the nests of eastern deciduous forest birds, which either didn't face that threat in, in their history or faced at a very low level. They face at a very high level now and it's thought to be an important factor in the loss of many, the numbers of many bird species. And so cowbirds just love coming in on an edge, looking for nests that are near the edge of a patch of woods where woodland birds will be nesting. And they, females scout around, find the nests of the host species and they sneak in eggs along with the host's eggs. Here's a couple of cowbird eggs here. They're specially adapted, the eggs, the shells are especially hard, so they're hard to poke a hole in and throw out. The shells are also especially round, so they're very difficult for the host to grasp and throw out. And so what tends to happen is the hosts just take care of the young and it's often to the detriment of their own young. This is not a wood thrush nest, just for the record, this is a red-winged blackbird nest, but it's a good picture, which is why I used it. But cowbirds have a really big impact on, on songbird, in particular, songbird reproductive success. When you take any kind of, when you create edge, you create a space for cowbirds to move into. They are not a forest interior species, they are an edge and an open country species. And if you, if you cut a development right through that forest, you're gonna expose much more of that, that, that land to this, this, in addition to other threats that are gonna change with the changing ecology of the, of the site. So just a quick summary, and this is kind of just for the record in the slides, just based on what I've seen and, and some of the basics of avian ecology in eastern deciduous forest. The site appears to support a mix of resident and migratory bird species that are very typical for the habitat in the region. It's what I kind of thought it was gonna be when I got there. I don't think there's any big surprises, but I do think it's a, it's a healthy looking bird community, which matches the look of the site overall. And then in terms of how the bird community will change with the proposed development, area sensitive species, interior species are likely to be negatively affected by that change in the habitat and the, the many well-known edge effects on interior bird species are likely to increase. And that'll shift the bird community over time. It will take time, going back to what, what Dr. DeVito said about sort of the, the, the time scale over which these events take place. You won't see it right away, but over time, fewer and fewer of the species that are in the interior will return to breed there. And that'll either be because they have low nest success or they face mortality. And eventually you'll, that site will just look like the bird community of all the similar little patches of woods in this part of the state. That's what I have.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I don't have any, I, I don't have any additional questions for Dr. Butler.
Mr. McGurney, do you have any questions for the doctor on his testimony?
I do not, Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Dr. Butler on his testimony?
No.
Mr. Wilkes, do you have any questions for Dr. Butler on his testimony?
No question.
Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions?
Um, sure. The interior wetlands that are in the site, which I guess you couldn't see from the edges, but we know that there's wetlands that are obviously protected. Are you able to predict, you know, a sense of what, what other sorts of species would probably be in those wetlands? And whether after the development, obviously the wetlands can't be touched, but given the development in the area, would they stay or would they likely leave and be replaced with something?
Water thrushes are probably there and probably swamp sparrows, those would be my, off the, off the top of my head, thinking about the ones that would be in, that I would be looking, expecting to see in that, in a wetland inside a forest like that. Sorry, water thrush? Water thrushes and swamp sparrows are two I can think of, neither which are, neither which is endangered or anything like that, but and then migratory birds are known to be attracted to water sources when they're migrating. So it might not be, you might not see a change in the species that are using the site for breeding, but you might see an effect on the migrants that are using the site as a stopover site. Because they get to the, as they're flying in, so when birds choose habitat, they kind of do it hierarchically. They look for something on a broad scale, especially when they're migrating, they're a couple of thousand feet up in the air. And they're looking and using visual cues to decide where to land. And if they, if they're able to make a decision and not just running out of fuel. And if they, if they're able to make a decision and not just running out of fuel, but once, once they do, once they get into a parcel of land to refuel and regain water, then they move around the habitat and try to find the resources they need. So, and they're very good, migratory birds are very good at finding water. They need water. They need to replenish their water stores. So that would be, that would be an effect, but that'd be, that'd be difficult to detect. You'd have to be watching that part, that specific microhabitat during migration on mornings when migrants were landing, because they migrate at night. And book to see, yeah, but you could, you know, there's ways to do it. You could also set up nets and, and do surveys by capturing individuals as they come through.
Gotcha. And across the whole site development, is there anything that can be done to ameliorate the change in, the change in the bird species?
Oh, like if the development were to go in? Sure. I mean, if you had people pulling out non-native, the non-native species that are eventually going to invade, which is a very large lift, logistically, that, sorry, that was a bad pun. It's a very large lift to pull those plants out. That would, that would, that would probably help because a lot of the native species provide food sources for migratory birds. Other than that, it's really hard to, it's really hard to overcome a loss of space. One, one other note, just going back to this, these, these graphs kind of point to that. So the, the relationship here is a very strong relationship across these four species. As you get, as you, as you get, as you, as you create parcels of land below certain sizes, the numbers of birds just drop off. And this is a large study with a large sample done over five years at almost 500 sample sites. It's a very robust data set. And what it's showing is that there's just a, this amount of space is a very strong explainer for what happens to the organisms that are there. Other things that matter are the habitat quality within the space and particular resources like a water, like a water source or something. So in a micro scale, these things do matter. And that's why there's uncertainty, especially in these smaller spaces. Do you see how the, the certainty bars, which are the, the sort of the dash lines that are flanking the center line? They're much bigger and smaller patches because you could get a small patch with an awesome feature in it. And so the species occurs there, but many small patches, just due to random sampling, aren't going to have any great features in them. Whereas if you get a big enough site, it's a certainty that you're going to find those species there in many, in some cases, because big sites just have everything they need.
For the record, Professor Butler was just using the slide with the four graphs of four species next to each other.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Cap, do you have any questions for Dr. Butler on his testimony?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Klein?
So have you ever testified as an expert for a development?
I've never been asked.
Have you ever testified before as an objector before the, for tonight?
Where?
For another site plan application. Have you ever?
I got planning board of zones.
In this municipality?
No, 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 anywhere in New Jersey. We'll start with New Jersey.
Yeah, yeah. They tried to put a parking lot in it, a development right next to my house.
Okay.
In Pennsylvania.
And any other, in New Jersey?
No, not in New Jersey. No.
So this is the first time you're testifying as an expert in this for an objector?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Dr. Butler, are these birds presently in this site?
The only, I didn't detect any of those.
So it's a hypothesis. So, okay, objectively, it's a hypothesis that they're there. Because you didn't detect them in, in your two hours, limited time, limited space. But in the two hours we objected, you observed 20 other species. You did not observe any of these four.
No.
Okay. Is there a, I want to get this right. Is there any cowbirds in the forest presently that you've observed?
Cowbirds? Yeah, I, well, I saw them on a couple of my observation points. Yes.
Okay. Good. Okay. Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions for Dr. Butler on his testimony?
Can I, sorry, can I just follow up to your question? Can I follow up to your question?
Go right ahead.
It's not, it's not time appropriate for these species to be there right now. So it's me not having detected them doesn't mean they won't be there next month or in six weeks. Yeah. So I wouldn't have necessarily, if you asked me if I had to predict ahead of time, will I detect these? I would say I just heard my first wood thrush in, in central New Jersey yesterday.
Okay.
Um, I haven't heard any oven birds or tanagers or red eyed veros. They're not back yet. So
It's possible.
So I wouldn't even, it's not really a hypothesis that they're there because they, I wouldn't hypothesize that they should be there right now.
Okay.
Yeah, in six weeks, if I were to survey a bunch of times and still not detect them, then it would be a hypothesis that they're in there, even though I tested for that and they weren't.
Okay.
Right now, it's not even a valid hypothesis because they shouldn't be there.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I follow with one question, if you don't mind?
Yes, go right ahead.
Is it fair to say that these four species are commonly found in eastern forests in New Jersey? Deciduous forests?
Yes, in, in the right, yeah, of the right size with the right quality habitat. Yeah.
So you're not hypothesizing these are normally available in our forests when they're left intact?
Sorry, can you say it again?
You're not, strike that. You answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I study, yeah, I study oven birds in, in the pine barrens and they're very abundant. Yeah. And, and I, I do lots of, like I, I said earlier, I do lots of bird surveys with students and adult learners in central New Jersey, a little bit south of here. But what, in the right patches of habitat, you can find all these.
And so in an eastern deciduous forest in New Jersey, would you expect to typically see these four species, for example, at the correct time of year?
That's correct time of year and the right size. Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Definitely. Yeah. I mean, I would, I would take courses to certain patches of habitat on the hope of them being able to see some of these. You know, I'd drag 20 people with me to, to do that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Just a quick question.
I'm sorry, Mr. McNeil.
Sorry to jump in. Were any of those species that you observed listed as endangered or threatened?
No, I mean, the ones that I saw?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, they're not the, but again, it's very difficult to observe an endangered species, even if I had 200 hour, 200 hours of observation time, unless you're in the exact place that a danger, endangered species is, you're just not going to detect it. So, I mean, of the 20 things I did observe directly, probably the, the worm eating warbler is, is a forest species that's also a migrant, a long distance migrant, and it's not in any peril or anything like that, but that's an example of a species where it depends on lots of different parts of the planet, lots of different parts of the continent in order to live throughout its annual cycle. And if they don't have habitat when they get up here to breed, or if they don't have good stopovers sites, which I think the one I saw was probably stopping over, then, then their numbers as a species will go down. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Dr. Butler on his testimony?
Yes, I do. What impact does events like extended periods of drought and things of that sort impact some of these numbers?
What was the last part?
How does it impact the, the populations having like some of these events, like extended periods of drought and things of that sort?
So that, the, the answer to that's going to depend on what we need, what you mean by extended period. If, if we're talking about like in, and say a one, a one season drought, like say during a breeding season, the population might not be very productive in that breeding season. So in particular, during the nesting stage, when young birds need to be fed by their parents in a dry year, say, when there's fewer, the insect abundance is going to be lower often because the insects feed on the plants that are there. If the plants don't have enough water, they don't make all the nice green leaves for those insects to eat. So that could scale up in, to a lack of food that could carry over to low reproductive success. That'd probably be on the proximal quickest scale. That'd probably be the first sign of something like that.
But it doesn't have the impact of like, if you had such an event last year, would you see a smaller population this year and then it goes back up or?
Again, it depends on the scale. So yeah, sure, populations are resilient. Healthy populations in, in otherwise stable environments, they go through cycles of in small, small increases in population size and small decreases and, but they tend to be steady over time, all things being equal. So a severe drought over many years could knock down a population for a longer period of time than a one year or something like that. Yeah.
Thank you. Dr. Butler, I have another question. So you said the four birds that, in that grouping, they're not there. How, how far do they fly normally? Where do they come from? Do they come from South Jersey, Canada, two miles away, 20 miles away?
So you're, you're quizzing me on my memory of the wintering range maps of all these four species, which I don't fully remember all of them. But it, the short, brief answer, first answer is it varies. So they don't all winter in a very narrow latitude to the south. For example, oven birds winter, I believe, from central Mexico to northern South America. So they have a very large wintering distribution and I think it's similar for the other three species.
So the next question is, if this project goes through and there's a decrease in the forest, would these find other areas of Essex County, even West Orange, such as Southmont Reservation to populate?
So what would, the, the loss of habitat will just lower the carrying capacity of the, of the, of whatever area you want to judge. So if you wanted to expand to include whatever other sites you're thinking of, that they'll, maybe the birds will move there, then just add all that landmass together and count up all the birds that could be there and just take out the chunk that you've gotten rid of and you're at least going to lose that much. So what, what birds do, and Dr. DeVito talked a little bit about this. They, in the breeding season, they almost all defend territories and so they control exclusive space from each other. So you can't just say like, here, we're going to give you guys, you know, five acres of really good habitat and you're just going to have the same number as you would have had in 10 acres of decent habitat. You might get that result, but more likely a couple of individuals are going to control a lot of that proportion. You're going to, the other individuals are just going to have to go someplace else. And so what happens in the, in systems where there's variability in habitat quality is the owners tend to win. So if you, if you are, if you have precedence on a site and you're the first male to that area and you start singing and looking around like it's yours, when the next male comes in to challenge you, the general rule is the owner just tends to win. The challenger goes, oh, this is yours. Okay, I'm going to look down the road. And then what they do is they, they segregate into lower, lower quality habitats. And when birds can't obtain habitat that's sufficient to support a nesting attempt, they just give up and move on to the next life history stage.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Raffin, do you want to say something?
Two quick questions. What happens to the breeding success if a pair attempts to nest when occupying a small patches compared to the normal range they would have before fragmentation?
So I think the answer that's going to be species specific. I can't have one for all species. Different species respond differently to disturbance and, and temporal, environmental disturbances like we brought up before, or spatial disturbances, like removing a chunk of habitat. But the other thing is that most of these species exhibit what's called site fidelity, where they tend to return roughly to the area, sometimes very specifically to the exact same little patch of habitat, even to the exact same perch on an exact same tree year after year. And so what would likely happen for the birds that are, say, in the forest that's predicted to be cut down? Is that what you're trying to ask, get at? Like what's going to happen when they come back and there's houses there?
Nested.
Yeah. 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 Well, I mean, I think the birds that are breeding in this site will come back in the spring to breed, the ones that are migrants. They'll come back in the spring to breed and they use various landmarks and cues to know where, where they're going. And so they, they come, I mean, these male birds will come right back to the exact same piece of habitat. So they'll come back and there will be a house there, but they'll be in the right general area. And what they'll probably do is move into the forest in the margins, which going back to what Dr. DeVito said, that could be an ecological trap because it's full of cowbirds and predators and abiotic environment that's not suitable for their species. So they come back like, cool, oh, there's a housing development here, but they don't say that, obviously. They move into the neighboring patch of woods because it's the next closest thing. They're not going to pick up and move to one of these other parks that I referenced. That's very unlikely because they've already scaled down and done like a hierarchical decision-making on where they're going to settle. And they were there last year. Things worked out pretty good. So they come back, they're not going to be in the exact territory they were on. They're going to try to get a neighboring territory in the closest patch of woods. And they're, it would be a disruptive social environment that, that year that everybody comes back for sure.
And assuming they're adaptable enough to move to another area, does that movement and concentration of more individuals in another area impact breeding capacity or strategy?
That's hard to predict, but basically what you'd be doing is you'd be increasing the breeding density above what it would normally have been. And so competition for resources might go up. You might also have increased agonistic interactions among territory holders because they're bumping into each other more than they normally would. So it, it's, it's a really interesting question, what would happen? But I don't think we know the answer. We can just think about what it would be like to cram more birds into that little space, but that would only last a little while because moving into these smaller, these neighboring spaces, they're almost definitely going to have lower reproductive success due to the higher density and the crowd, they don't have as much space as they need. So they might nest and they might have smaller territories that year, but overall their reproductive success is likely to be less. It's almost definitely going to be less than what it would have been if they were just distributed in their natural distribution. So after those fails, they're less likely to return. So they either didn't make babies who don't then come back, or they have an experience of failing and so they move on. And that's one of the common things about nest failure in birds is it is very experience based. And if they fail, they'll often make a change. It starts out with just not nesting, maybe in the exact same patch of habitat to then just moving to a different site.
Thank you. I have one last question to clarify.
Right ahead.
The four species that are on the four graphs that are on the screen now, the, the graph that has four together, are those offered as an example or exemplar of what happens to species as size goes down? Or is it only these four species you're concerned about?
Oh, no. So this is just, this paper studied all the species, all this, all the breeding songbirds that they could detect. So I think the total number in their study was maybe 70, 70 to 80 species. I just took, just clipped their figure from their paper. So they had tables of data for all the other species they studied. And this is just the figure that they put together because it's four, as you can see in the figure legend, it's four, four common forest interior species. So they just want to highlight those in their, in their presentation.
So this is an exemplar, but not meant to be exclusive of the effect. In other words, this is an example using four species. It's not meant to say this effect is limited to these four.
Oh, definitely not. No. I, I think that they had, they put, they used these in their figure for the same reason that I did. I used it in the presentation. These are common species that should be in this, in this area, in, in, you know, natural woodland habitat that should be here. And so they're common, they're specific to that habitat type. And they presented them in one of their figures in their paper for the same reason I did, because we have the same purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public have any questions for Dr. Butler? Please raise your hand, come up and be identified. Come on. Come on down. State your name for the record, please.
Singelis, S I N G E L I S. Okay, sorry, I'm very soft spoken. I have a question about the effects of the buildings actually on the site. Because I know that there is a building here in New Jersey nearby where during migration, the lights from the building and the glass, it's a site where thousands of birds die by crashing into the building. And I'm wondering, because this forest patch now has no lights and no glass, how, would that also affect the birds?
So I don't know the heights of the buildings. I haven't seen that information and that's going to play into it for sure. And also the exterior lighting and what the birds are crashing into in this type of building is going to be the windows. So they're going to see all the, you know, brick and mortar parts of the building. But what, the reason they crash into windows is at the, at the angles that they're flying, sometimes the window just looks like the sky to them or it looks like the, the horizon. So they just, they don't, you know, they don't, they just don't know. So it's going to depend a lot on very site specific factors. Also, the orientation of the windows relative to the flight paths that the birds are using between the different patches of forest, which again, I don't know, but I mean, that, that, that sets up a situation where if you have birds trying to move between patches, especially this concept that we're going to save these two sets of core forests on either side because they're so great. Well, if they are and you're creating, and then you're putting buildings right between them, either the birds aren't going to use them or when they do, they could face running into a building or they could also, in that exposed space, be exposed to predators.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do any other members of the public have any questions for Dr. Butler on his testimony? Please raise your hand, be identified. Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Butler. Mr. Raffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our witnesses for tonight. As I mentioned, Mark Gallagher is out of the country. He will be available, assuming we go forward June 4th, and we expect of other witnesses at that time. I did want to just note that we might recall Sean Walsh for certain reasons. A request has been made to the mayor and council concerning a flood hazard analysis. It's potentially possible he may come back to speak to that issue. And I may submit a copy of what was submitted to the extent the board feels it's relevant to post as part of the file here. But I just wanted to alert you to the fact that I may submit, Ms. Plaka will be copied, of course, that paperwork in the event that the board believes. In the event that the board believes it should be posted as part of the record here. Otherwise, we will be back at the next meeting with Mark Gallagher and other witnesses. I just want to thank the board for all of its attention and, um, assistance with questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rafi. Mr. Plaka, do you have any last words?
No, thank you.
Hey, well, I, I have to say, your two witnesses tonight were very enlightening. Um, well spoken, well educated, and, uh, the presentation was, um, great. I was very impressed. What the board will use it for is up to the board, but the information that they provided was very interesting.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Um.
Carrying this application with no further notice, June fourth, six thirty.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, hang out for a second. This, uh, application will be carried with no further notice required to June fourth. The regular meeting will be here in Town Hall at six thirty. Zoom will be available with no comment from Zoom, Zoom. The next regular planning board meeting. Will be Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty PM via Zoom. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wait, wait, wait. Plaka.
Just, it just came to my mind, it, since you mentioned no further notice, I just want to state for the record. That the applicant did provide renotice for tonight's hearing. And we did submit the proof of service and, uh, publication to, uh, the board secretary in advance of the meeting, and I believe it is posted on the agenda.
Yeah, and just to add.
Ms. McGovern.
The notice clarified that if for some reason Zoom goes down, the show will go on here in person. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes are above the nose. Thank y'all.